Welcome to the U N A School District Board Work Session. Today is March 12th, 2025. The meeting is being held at 826 South 1500 East Naples, Utah. Present at the meeting is Board President Dave Shivers, Vice President Tanya McKee, Robin McClellan, Todd Massey, Denise Maynard, Superintendent Dr. Rick Woodford, and myself, Troy Timothy, Business Administrator. The time is 4:02 PM.
Welcome, everybody. We're glad to have you here. Excited to get started on our meeting tonight. And to begin, Tanya McKee, our Vice President, will give us the reverence.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we're so grateful for the opportunity to meet together. We're grateful for each board member and for their contribution to our team. Please bless that we can have Thy Spirit to be with us, to guide us and direct us. Please help us to be at peace and to show respect and kindness to one another. Help us to feel of Thy Spirit to guide and direct us, to be aware of the needs in our community and in our schools, and help us to be wise in all that we do, that we will be responsible and aware of the needs of our community and our students. Please forgive us of our shortcomings and help us to work together and to work as a team. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Tanya. Thank you, Tanya. Diving right in, Policies for Approval on First Reading, 005.0550, Volunteering in District Schools. And Dr. Leece is going to take that one for us and will let her lead us through.
Good early evening, late afternoon. What do we caught? All right, so we're looking tonight at Policy 0050550, Volunteering in District Schools. This may seem familiar to you. It was a new policy back in 2022 when legislation was passed that we pay for volunteer background checks. So we're doing that now. The current change came to us through Risk Committee, and it's related to the age of our volunteers. You'll see in Section 2.0, the red writing, that's the addition to this policy. Nothing else has been changed. Robin, I did get your email on those little edits, and we'll make first and second reading. Anyway, so this is in alignment with our hiring policy, the age requirements. So it's just the addition of that, that the volunteers in elementary schools will be at least 18, volunteers in secondary schools will be at least 21, all other volunteers must be 18 years of age, meaning outside of the schools. So, you know, if they're working in maintenance or technology or here at the district office, for example. And then you'll notice there is an exception can be made on a case-by-case basis. If we do have situations where, let's say, it's the only applicant, or if maybe the person is turning 21 within a couple of months, and they're highly qualified, I take those, I ask the principals to submit a rationale. I take those to the superintendent, and he approves anything that's outside of the age requirements. So that would be our same process with volunteers. Any questions for me?
Does this apply to, like, say you're doing a carnival fundraiser, that they can let the kids help still, right?
So you'll notice there's a difference in the policy between a visitor or school helper and a volunteer. So our volunteers are supervising students without any other background check person that's in line of sight of that individual. So let's say they're doing, you know, a carnival or something, and there are teachers that are also there, then they would be qualified as a visitor or a school helper rather than a volunteer. So we've trained principals on this policy, and they've done, you know, there have been no issues this year as far as that goes, so.
Good.
Board members, any other questions for Dr. Leece? Thank you.
You're welcome.
We only have one policy for approval on first reading. Policies for, and we only have one of these for, on second reading, school fee policy. And Kristi Nurdin's going to lead us through that one.
Hello. I want to update you on some changes since the first reading. They're minor changes, but some information on that. So the middle school theater was removed from the fee policy because it operates without, with fundraiser funds, so we removed that. Sewing was a club. It's no longer a club, so we removed that. Middle school student council is operated with fundraiser funds. U H S 3D design has never been charged, and we don't plan on charging it, so that was removed. There were changes to the school lunch fees. So for breakfast, elementary went from $1.35 to $1.15 with a 15 cent increase. For breakfast at the middle schools, it went from $1.55 to $1.75, a 20 cent increase. And the high school remained the same at $1.75. And then the lunch, elementary went from $2.10 to $2.25, 15 cent increase. Middle school, $2.30 to $2.50, 20 cents. And then the high school, $2.50 to $2.75. And this is all to address the rising increasing price of food. So those are the changes since the last reading.
Comment, if I understand correctly, it's been quite a while since we raised school lunch prices. Is that correct?
I don't know.
President, that is. It's been several years. One reason we haven't, if the board recalls, we've been in a deficit spend mode, right? For about three or four years now, trying to get that balance down. That's one thing the state has kind of put some pressure on us to do. We're at the tail end of that. Like, we're going to have to adjust budgets, and there's going to have to be some changes made, or that program will not operate in the black. So part of this increase is it's in response to the increase in food expenses, but also to help us get back on track of making that a self-sufficient program.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions?
I do, but it's, I mean, it's in relationship with Christine. Finance Committee, Todd and Dave really. Have you guys talked about, okay, so House Bill 415 last year? I mean, this is one of the reasons that we're looking, they want all complete transparency for school fees and understanding few waivers and all that. So they, as far as I understand, and Superintendent, you can jump in. I mean, so last year, they gave us money, and it was a three-year step down, from what I understand. And then this year, House Bill 344 was implemented, and they gave us no funds. So I'm just wondering, are we having those conversations in your committee meeting about? I guess.
Based on curricular and co-curricular.
Funding.
Funding, yes. We have, we haven't, Troy, I'm not sure, since you've been here, that we've pushed that, we've pushed it quite heavily last year when these funding had changed. And so this year, depending where that bill goes, I think we'll probably, we'll obviously have to look at it.
You know, we're right in the process of billing the FY '26 budget, so that's definitely going to have to be under consideration as we work on that. And that'll be worked on over the next month, or month and a half, to figure out how we're going to, to spread this around.
I don't see Rodrigo.
He's here.
Oh, you're hiding back there. Rodrigo really understands this well, and has taken a lot of time to explain it to me and helping me along that path as well, Troy. So I appreciate him. And Robin, I think if we have any questions, specific questions, Rodrigo would really be able to nail it down for us.
As long as you guys are having those conversations, because, I mean, legislators want a free path to graduation for public education. And I think, you know, I know our, on our activity fees, about 1.3, 1.4 million at the high school. So I'm just thinking, are we thinking ahead? I know legislation, it could change also in the drop of a hat, but I'm just hoping we're having this. Because I'm not really involved in that. I just want to make sure we are.
I believe that, right now, it just applies to co-curricular, not to extracurricular. And I know there's been talk about that extending, but I don't, I don't believe that's going to happen anytime in the near future. That's, that's, that's a lot of money.
So do we have disaggregated out co-cur, I guess, I'm sure.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so a lot of these fees are extracurricular in nature.
I'm talking about, right?
Yeah, most of, most everything is.
Extra.
Extracurricular.
Sorry, don't, I don't mean to muddy the waters at all. I just want to make sure we're.
Okay, any other questions on the school fee policy? Thank you, Kristi. Number, number three, letter A, minutes. Troy?
All requested corrections to the February 12th, 2025 Board Meeting and the February 26th, 2025 Special Business Meeting Capital Outlight Budget. Draft minutes have been addressed and posted on Board Docs, and with no further corrections, they are ready for approval.
Board members, do you have any additional corrections or changes to the minutes? Okay, sounds good. Number B, Contracts Needing Board Approval. There are no contracts this month that need, needed board approval. So we'll move on to Item C, K5, Ready Math Curriculum Adoption. And Jaime Laba will lead us through that one. Well, we got to your turn fast, didn't we, Jaime?
Very efficient, I like it.
Okay, Ready Math. And you can see in the, in the memo, there are some reasons for moving forward with the adoption. Last year, we moved forward with the one-year adoption because the state was looking at their math, their math standards. Not much changed, at least enough that would warrant a change of the curriculum. Now, one of the things we're looking at is, is it better to do a one-year review of curriculum? Because we want to be able to look at our programs and with the very subjective view and objective view, and really, are these programs working for us? There are some pros and cons of going long-term versus a one-year. One of the, one of the benefits is cost savings for a long-year program, for a five-year program versus a one-year. And also, we have a number of district-approved, board-approved curriculums, from science in the secondaries to CKLA to Ready Math. So the longer we push back Ready Math, what comes up is there's a day in the future, in a couple of years, where some of these other programs are due, and they're big expenses. What you don't want to do is you don't want to have, you don't want to have a $2 million expense all at once, okay? And that's, that was one of the dilemmas that, that we would have if we kept postponing Ready Math. But we've looked at Ready Math. It's a program that's working for us. Are there other programs out there? Probably there are, but there's really no compelling reason at this point to change gears with believing that our principals are on board, they understand the program, our teachers on board. It takes a long time to understand these programs. We're still working now, you know, six years later, just still trying to keep the momentum going with implementation. It takes quite a while. And there's nothing in the law that says that every so often we have to adopt a new program. So, there we are. This is just K5. It's not 6-8. 6-8 has a, has a separate plan, but this is only for K5.
So you did mention in here that, that the $480,000 includes one year of grade six through eight?
Yes.
So, so is that a, that's like a bonus of $150,000 if we take it? Or is it more than that? I'm just curious.
It's a little tricky. The initial quote was to involve 6-8 over five years, and realized 6-8 is going to actually go through a curriculum review next year with math. The savings, it's about, I don't think it's a, did you say $150,000?
Well, you showed $151,000, I assume.
Over the case of five years, it's a savings of roughly about $300,000.
So if you, if you do the five-year, but so the one-year, the $480,000 includes a one-year?
Yeah, the two schools, both middle schools in a one-year are about $35,000 per. So for the middle schools, it's about $70,000 per year.
The way I read that is, I was like, they would give us that year of each of those?
They're not giving us, yeah.
They're not giving us, all right.
Yeah, they're not giving us, but we're paying for it. But there is a, there is a cost savings, absolutely.
Okay. And so is that, where you've got K through five, is there a benefit to have it six through eight? At least for that first year while we're defending?
You know, there's always benefit because the kids understand the programs, but really, that's, that's our goal, but that's not always the case. If, say, 6-8 looks at a different program next year and realizes that, you know, when we look at programs, we just don't look at, we look at a number of items such as cost, teacher satisfaction, evidence that it meets the core standards, evidence that it works, you know, our, our score is improving. There's a number of look for, so it's not always just teacher satisfaction. Although that does, that does count towards that. So when they go through the process next year, they'll go through a rubric to determine what comes out on top.
Great, thank you.
Robin?
A question I probably should know about Ready Math versus iReady Math.
Well, there's a digital component to the iReady, and then the Ready Math component. So there's, there's, there's a digital component of Ready Math. It's all included, so if you go into class.
When we say iReady, that's usually the digital component, whereas Ready Math is the whole curriculum.
It's a good mix, you know? Our teachers have view boards now. These aren't view boards, but similar, where you'll see the digital component, and that's different. And then the kids also can get on at their own digital component, and then you have the hard copies as well. So it's a mix.
We only have, I think we have three elementary principals here. Do you have any concerns about iReady Math? No? Okay. My only question.
And I reached out to a number of principals and got some thoughts on, because there were some thoughts going back and forth, whether we need to look at a new program or just throw the idea out there of looking at a new program. But after I did my analysis, and you can see the reasons for moving forward, just thought it's the best in terms of, best for our students and best for taxpayers in our, in our county, so.
Any other questions, Board Member? Thank you, Jaime.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to turn the time over to Superintendent Woodford for naming our baby.
Thank you, President. So there's, there's two memos, and this is a little bit confusing, but there's one that Jeff Lysic, it came from Jeff Lysick, and that is on the Central Cove Logo Contest. And there's one from me, if you'll maybe pay attention to that one first, because it addresses both the name and logo for the new preschool. As you know, geez, almost a year ago, right? We, we went through a process to get a recommendation for a new name because the architects, they wanted that at the time, as they were doing the planning. And, and then when the, the logo issue came up, we did a thorough policy review. And on first snag, we didn't, we couldn't find a policy, but there is a policy that, that essentially says that the school board needs to rename or name a school. So, so we're coming to you tonight to ask for official approval of the preschool's new name. And I want to share the process with you. If you look at the very bottom in admin content, there's a brainstorming list. It has like 28 names on it. That came to me from the preschool. So, so Erin Brown facilitated a process to, to meet with teachers and to get a brainstorm and ideas of different possibilities for names. And the one that they, they brought was Item 16, which is the Cove Early Learning Center. And she brought that to me, and I kind of rejected it. I, it, it just seemed kind of trendy, and it didn't, for me, it didn't really bring in the historical context of Central Cove. And, and so together, we kind of compromised and came up with, we used parts of the, the old name and parts of the new name. So, so the name we're bringing is, it's Central Cove Early Learning Center. And that's, right now, our architects have all that marked, drafted up and ready to roll, but I had them hold off on production until tomorrow, just in case the board wants to do something different. But, but what we're recommending is that the school name be officially adopted as Central Cove Early Learning Center. And then aside from that, you can, you can take a look at the logo. Jeff, do you, do you want to come up and just talk about the logo component? Jeff and Erin, yeah?
So there's a couple of things that play with the new logo. One, traditionally, they've been the Central Cove Caterpillars. And we wanted to look at the fact that they were moving from the old building into a new building, so the morph from a caterpillar into a butterfly. And then also, the building has a butterfly roof on it, so, you know, why not incorporate that as well? Kind of the design element there. So we talked and had a couple of different options, looked at those, and went with the Central Cove Monarchs, as is the Monarch Butterfly. And then put together a plan to hold a student design competition open to all ninth through 12th graders in the district, so that they could bring some ideas forward. There was a cash award that went along with that student design. Jim Munford, our arts coordinator, helped put together the criteria, the contest information. This was pushed out beginning of January, and they had until the first week in March to get us designs. So we had a number of designs come in from four different students. We had some of our students that submitted multiple designs. And then we had a committee that came together, and this was the design that came out of that process was selected, but it's not the final design. And I think that's the most important thing to understand. There's still going to be modifications made to that. Robin was part of the committee that helped with the selection. We also had Lori Gilman, who's retired from the district and is still a professional graphic designer. And the winning student is going to work with Lori to incorporate the changes that were recommended by Erin's staff and by the committee members as well, to make sure that this fully represents Central Cove and what its mission is. No?
You said you, you covered it.
So, any questions for us?
So on the photo of the building, it's got the Cove preschool. The rendering that.
I think that was just the artist, the graphic rendering that was provided by the architect is one of the images of, of the external. That's not a final design.
I actually kind of like that, especially if you have the C as the, right? You know what I'm saying? This, the C with the old E.
It probably won't show up on the building, but it'll show up on letterhead, probably inside the school, but probably not on the building itself.
Yeah, I was just thinking, that name seems lengthy, and the Cove just sounds so much.
Well, we can call it whatever we want casually, but officially, it's going to be Central Cove Early Learning Center. But I, you know, I don't have a problem with the Cove either. I grew up in an area where the Cove was this really cool place to hang out that all the high schoolers went to, so it brings back fond memories.
I know, I know about that place, and that's why I rejected it.
It's no longer there. The Cove out in Salt Lake is the, the upper side of, the east side. That's the Cove. So, yeah, that's where Yalumpas High School and some of those are, up in the Cove.
Yeah, we'll probably just reference it as Central Cove, as we do now, right? And that's, it really doesn't change how we refer to the school.
So question, so on this brainstorming list, okay, so number three, it's not that Central Cove Early Childhood Learning Center, it's just Central Cove Early Learning Center, correct?
Right, correct.
I didn't see that on the list. That was, these are just the brainstorm.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it. Making sure, because that's even longer.
Any other questions? Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Report on the 2324 School Land Trust Plan, Jaime?
Hello again. So, you know, one of the, one of the requirements is to, is for the schools to report on how do they do with their goals, right? How was their spending? So last year, we, I think Robin asked me a few years ago to come up with like an infographic, something a little easier to read, which we did. And then this year, I, with the use of AI and chat, I developed something that I think is maybe even a little easier to read, I hope. So you can see each school, and you can see each school's goal or goals. Sometimes they have more than one goal. And then whether they met that goal, yes or no. And you can see on the bottom, there's the last page, there is a summary of reaching those goals. But, you know, part of the trust lands is we want, you know, we want the schools to set goals that are hard to reach. But it does feel really good when you meet those goals. But we also want them to set some, maybe not a wig. We do want wigs, but we want them to reach and really reach. And you can see that not all of our schools met their goals, but they're working towards that. And the trust lands is a really important funding source, as you know, especially at times where maybe enrollment's going down. You know, those trust land monies are really important for the schools. So you can, you have the summary in front of you. Do you have any questions?
This is a really nice way to look at it, and really quick.
Does it work for you? Okay.
Yeah. A question that's totally off the subject. As we try to keep up on our trainings, we've done the State Land Trust Training last fall, correct?
November, maybe? I'm not sure. Was it December?
November.
December.
Okay. Board members, questions, comments? Yeah.
Is it, okay, I hope that it was easier to read for you, so. I like it, and I thought you would like it, too.
Do we thank Jaime, or do we thank AI?
Thank me, because I'm the one that put it in AI.
I know, I'm just teasing.
AI makes my job much easier, for sure. And that's just a report for you. You don't have to, it's not a, not a broad topic, so.
No, we appreciate it. You know, and as you, and as you scroll through it, let you know where we need to work and the schools that it's working, that things are working well, then, it's nice.
And hopefully, maybe gives you a talking point as you meet with your schools, you know? If you do, that you have some information that you could, you could talk with them about. So, there you go.
Thank you, Jaime.
Okay, thank you.
Superintendent, we'll turn the time over to you for Utah Teacher Merit Award Application.
Okay, thank you, President. I'm going to switch this over, just give me a second. You want to flip Apple TV? Thank you. Okay, Board Members, we, oh, hold on. This is not in the right order. Let me go back to Board Docs. There we go. Ah. We'll make this work. So we had an opportunity to, after the board made the determination that we would go ahead and apply for the state teacher merit award system. We, we had, we have to get our application together, right? Now, now we have to fine tune and apply to the state. The application originally was due April first, but with some legislation that was extended, we're still going to meet the April first deadline, just because we, we got off to a fast and furious start. So I want to share the, just the process with you. And I'm, I'm missing some slides. I don't know what's going on here. We had a slide with committee members on there and it's just not showing up. Are you guys seeing that?
We see it, yeah.
Oh. Oh, look at this. It's, it's, it's a setting. Okay, I see what's going on. No, it's, I just, I just won't go into the slideshow. It's, it's a setting. I wondered why those eyeballs were crossed out, that's why. So if you look at the committee members, we, we had five teachers, four administrators, myself, that participated on the committee. You can see who those people are. The, the committee had three requirements they had to fulfill by state rule. They had to read the TMA guidebook, which is a pretty lengthy document. They had to view the TMA introductory video and then they had to complete a Canvas course. So they were well informed on the TMA structure that the state has in place before we even had our first committee meeting. And, and so everybody committed, completed those committee assignments. The, the process that we used, if you look at the third slide there, we had three committee meetings already. First one was on February third and that's where we, we brainstormed two different options. One, and I'll share those with you in just a minute. The, the second committee meeting, we really wanted to try to make, refine those options and learn more about those options. And then the third meeting, we, we put some things into action before the third meeting. We, we did a secondary teacher focus group. So Amanda Brown met with teachers at the high school. I met with teachers at both middle schools, just to have a face-to-face discussion. At the high school, I think you met with all teachers, correct Amanda? I only met with the non-core teachers at the middle school level. Because we were really mostly concerned, we wanted to know, do they really care enough to participate in, in this system that we should go outside of the norm, right? The norm on this would be that only teachers in state-assessed areas would participate. We were proposing a system that would be inclusive of all teachers. But in doing that, it definitely went outside of the state's framework a little bit. We wanted to make sure before we did the work to really refine that, that teachers were on board with it, right, the non-core teachers. So that's why we had those focus group discussions. We ended up surveying all secondary teachers. So that, that happened between meeting two and meeting three. And, and then if you look at meeting three, we met to review data from the focus groups and the survey. We voted on the two options and then we discussed and reached consensus on the award criteria that will be submitted in our application to the state. So those are the things that happened. I want to share the two options with you. This is word for word what, what the committee came up with, right, and what ended up on the surveys. The first option was a fully inclusive, where secondary teachers work on one of two teams, either a literacy team or a STEAM team, right? So science, technology, engineering, arts or mathematics. And students' growth in their team's specific area of focus is counted toward growth based on roster verification. So meaning, let's say you had a PE teacher that's working on the literacy team, right? You'd take all the, all the student scores in literacy on the state assessments that were on the PE teacher's roster and you'd apply that to the PE teacher. Now, one might say, well, yeah, but the PE teacher doesn't teach literacy. The PE teacher teaches PE. The, the way this was structured is, is that the PE teacher would be on the literacy team. The team would work together to determine what the role of the PE teacher might be in helping with the goal of literacy. So it could be, you're going to do some kind of a writing, a bell ringer or a writing assignment each day, or maybe you do a project around the PE standards where students have to submit a written work. Or, you know, maybe the team would say, look, we're going to take care of that stuff. We want our kids to be healthy, well-nourished and ready to learn every day. Like, we were going to leave that up to the team to decide. So that gives you an idea of how the team approach might work, right? Now, big problems with that approach in, in that, well, what if the PE teacher just has the attitude that, I'm just going to do what I've always done? I'm, you know, I'm not going to, to really participate in this. I might go to the team meetings, but I'm not going to do the bell ringer and just going to keep doing what I've always done, right? So, so the problem with that is, is if you had a teacher that took that, that stance and then through roster verification and just the lottery of what kids you get, if they end up getting a reward, that, that's, that can be problematic, right? It shoots holes in the credibility of the system, which is one of the main reasons why we went away from, from that option, right? The second option is inclusive of all elementary teachers and secondary teachers who teach language arts, science and mathematics in state-assessed grade levels. This option is, it excludes all other teachers. Even if you have a teacher that only teaches 12th grade language arts, they're, they're, they're not, those kids aren't tested. So that teacher would be excluded unless the school gave them a couple of sections of, say, 11th grade language arts, right? And I think there'll be some of those decisions that are made for teachers that want to participate. So we looked at those two options. We did, we looked at pros and cons. Amanda had another list from the high school that even had more pros and cons and we, we studied both of those lists. And, and then we looked at the survey data. I want to share that data with you. So this is the middle school's survey data. And as you can see, forty-two point three percent of the middle school teachers are, they're not rise-tested, in rise-tested subjects, right? They're, they're elective teachers, so to speak. Fifty-seven point seven percent are in tested subjects, right? And if you look at the response, so the first, this is kind of like voting for one of the two options, but they did it on a five-point scale, on, on agreement on which one they would want. And option one, there was definitely a lean toward agreeing with option one to include all at the middle school level. Okay? Option two, this coincides with that a little bit, right? There's disagreement, there's a lean of disagreement for option two. Now, when we go to the high school, first thing you'll notice is, is the high school flips, so there's more teachers at the high school by percentage that are elective teachers, which makes sense, right? Compared to the core teachers. However, even given that, there, there's a lean the other direction, right? So if, if you look at, at option one, for instance, now you have, you have more on the disagreement side for option one. And then option two is a little more balanced. So the, the data's not real conclusive. It really, it, what it tells us is there isn't really a strong consensus on either of these approaches. Okay? Does that make sense? Not strong consensus on either, when you look at both schools. So with that, considering that, again, knowing that option one is, is an option, we, we questioned whether or not the state would even approve it, because it does cut into the gray area pretty significantly of the state's program, right? So after considering all things, the, the committee voted, we actually voted. I didn't vote, I was the facilitator. It was a five to four vote in favor of option two. So very close. People had opinions on all sides of this. So, so the teachers weren't in consensus and neither was the committee. But we had a five to four lean and partly because we know that option two will be accepted by the state, we went with option two. Any questions about that? Because that was, that was the tough decision. That was the hard one. That was, I, I guess by me providing option, two options, particularly that fully inclusive option, it, it caused us some, some time and work. And had the committee selected it, it would have caused a lot more time and work. But, but that's not the direction the committee selected, okay? Questions about the two options? Okay, all right. The next decision that had to happen was criteria for the TMA system. So the, the committee needed to decide. The state, the state gave us some parameters. I want to share those with you. But before I do, just a quick review, right? The TMA performance levels, so if teachers are between like the, the top eleven and twenty-fifth percent of, of teachers in performance, then, then they're a level three teacher. Level two would be six to ten percent and, and level one would be the top five percent, which we would consider a master teacher according to TMA. And those correspond with different award levels, right? So you can see the award levels. The, the master teacher level, top five percent, it'd be a $10,000 payout three consecutive years. So it's $30,000. If you're in a high poverty school, then that becomes $60,000. Robin, did you send me a text about that? I think you did. The, the question was, what's the definition of high poverty?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the guidebook. Yeah, I, I didn't respond. I, I just, I got, I apologize.
I wonder about what schools for us are high poverty.
Yeah, so...
I just was wanting to refresh her.
We don't know yet. We don't know yet because the state's formula is, we don't have the data on that. It includes two definitions. One would be based on the number of students on free and reduced lunch, and I think that's seventy percent. It's pretty high. The second one, the definition is generational poverty.
More than twenty percent, yeah.
Yeah, and the generational poverty one is the one that's tricky. It's probably going to cause some of our schools to qualify that don't meet the seventy percent.
Intergenerational.
Yeah, yes, that's right. It means that from the, the parent to the grandparent, I, I believe that's what it means. So how we measure that? I don't know, but the state apparently has the data. So, so it'll be a little bit of a, of a surprise when they figure that out and let us know, because they haven't let us know yet. We don't know. Good question, though. Okay, so back to the second decision, what criteria should be applied? So the state's criteria, they give us some ranges. If you look at, at this graphic, you can see that student achievement and growth data has to account for between fifty-five and seventy-five percent of the criteria. Professional evaluation has to be between five and twenty and parent survey between two and five. Then there's optional criteria. Optional criteria, the way it's been laid out for this program, right now there's only two components. One would be collaboration and the other one would be student survey. However, they did say, you can come up with your own if you'd like and then we'll consider it. But we're not really sure what, what else there would be that, that we have data on. So one, one would be, the collaboration one, there's a, there's a rubric that the state provides. Teachers fill it out and they actually rate their experience with their team and they rate the collaboration of their colleagues. And our fear on that one is, is that, that, that could cause a little bit of divide. You know, if, if you crab in the bucket scenario, I'm not saying our teachers would do this, but, but if, if, you know, if you want, one way to rise up is to pull the crab down and we, out of, you know, from climbing out of the bucket. We, we don't want to put our teachers in that situation. So, so the survey, the committee didn't, didn't go for that one. Let me tell you where we landed, right here. So we, we landed at seventy-five percent student achievement growth data. Now, we were on, in consensus on this, so everybody agreed, right? Seventy-five percent student achievement growth data, twenty percent professional evaluation, two percent parent survey and three percent student survey. And I was actually kind of surprised they wanted to bring the student survey data into it, because we didn't have to, but they, they actually value that. And during the training that we took, the School of the Future produced some research that said that student survey of teacher performance is the most accurate measure of, actually more accurate than parent, but it's also, according to the researcher and the study that was done, it's a, it correlates better with student performance than even professional evaluation. So there's some value in student survey. And we already do student surveys. So we, we thought it would be, it wouldn't be another step. It'd be something we already do and we already can have that data. So that's where we landed is, is really the rationale, student achievement growth data and professional evaluation. The, the teachers on the committee felt like those were the most objective measures. And I said, so you trust your principals that much? And every one of them said, yes, we do. Principals, that's kind of cool, isn't it? So, of course, that's five teachers, but they were representative of, of our district, right? So... So a, a summary of where we landed, right? Option one, so we're, it's inclusive all, all elementary teachers and only the secondary teachers who teach language arts, science and mathematics in the state-assessed grade levels. This option excludes all other teachers. And then the criteria that we just reviewed, which is seventy-five student achievement growth data, twenty percent professional evaluation from the tree, two percent parent survey and three percent student survey. And I might add, the other reason why we didn't look at collaboration as an optional is because it's already measured in our tree, in our professional teacher evaluation. It's one of the standards. Any questions, board members?
So how many teachers would this be available for then?
Well, a lot, because it's, it's all of our elementary teachers, so...
It's going to be close to over, what, eighty percent of our teachers, this will be available?
Not quite eighty. I would say closer to seventy.
All right.
I don't know. Does that, does that sound?
It's about two-thirds.
There's mistletoe in.
Two-thirds, so sixty-six percent.
It's a little over two-hundred who will be eligible. And then, so a percentage of those, twenty percent of those will, they're actually submitting to the state.
And, and then board members, this, this is all going to happen in the background. So teachers really aren't going to know that there's anything different happening to them, right? I, I think that's important to know, right? I, I'm trying to think what else, I'm sorry, I had a thought, but it slipped away. But we, you know, we just want to make sure that, that again, I know, I know the concerns are, well, what, what is this going to do to culture and climate, our schools? It's, it's going to be in the background and, and no one's going to know who, who's awarded until it's done and over with and, and then the checks come in the next three years. It's really a one, they, they call it a five-year pilot. It's really one year.
Yeah, it wouldn't surprise me that, depending how that goes, first year that we see this implemented or done away with.
Yeah, I mean, the legislature didn't really address this. They, they, there's a little bit of cleanup, but there's no commitment to move forward yet.
Yeah, that's what I missed.
Yeah.
So I didn't look, I didn't look, so can I ask him other questions or you have more?
Yeah, no, go ahead, yeah.
So I just, this is just curiosity, just did, so did Tara and other charter schools around here also opt in? I guess there's that list I didn't look at.
I didn't notice if Tara was on there or not.
I was curious. And then NUE, so then also the Regional Education Service Agency, did NUES, how would?
Uh, news...
News, did they?
They didn't as a, as an organization.
I thought that was interesting that that was part of, okay, then I have one other question. So what I don't get, so the funding mechanism, so, I mean, I know they put the money aside, but I just want to understand how it works. So the school district, the LEA, all that criteria that you just talked about, we have the top master, the exemplary, the recognized, they talked about. Then, then it goes to the state TMA recognition pool? So, so I guess I'm asking, is the incentive pay only out of the state or does, if they're recognized at the LEA, are they also? I, I don't understand how that's working.
Okay, so it's a little tricky, but what happens is we, we will submit our top twenty-five, right? That's really all we have to do is come up. I mean, we'll know which category they fit in, but, but we'll recognize our top twenty-five. We submit those to the state. Okay? That guarantees that they're going to at least get the, the bottom tier. That's a guarantee. No matter what, all stu-, all teachers, the twenty-five we submit, all of them get recognized. Then the state takes all of the data from the state, they'll compile it and they will actually, each teacher will be compared to other teachers statewide to determine who gets the, the top two tiers.
Okay.
Okay? But the guarantee is if we submit them, they get at least the recognized status.
And that, that, okay.
Yeah, yes.
I mean, the 2,000, three, over three years.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, and then, just one more question that I couldn't find. What, so what if, so teachers, say they're in the top 25, and they, what if they leave? So, they get paid over three years, but what if they leave teaching?
Yeah, so this is, this is going to follow the teacher, and that's the reason why they stretched this over three years, is because what the legislature wants to see happen is they want teachers to move from regular schools to high poverty schools. So, if a teacher after, let's say one of our teachers at Mazer Elementary gets the top award, right? So, if you go back to that chart, just visually, you can see it. So, they're a master teacher, they get $10,000 a year for three years. But after the first year, that teacher moves to Eagleview. And let's just say Eagleview meets the criteria for high poverty, right? Well, then that, the next two years, they don't get a check for $10,000, they get a check for $20,000. That's the encouragement for teacher, the best teachers to move to high poverty schools. And it works the other way around, too. An Eagleview teacher could move to Mazer and go from a $20,000 award to a $10,000 award. So, that's incentive for them to stay at Eagleview, right? That's how it works. And it crosses district boundaries. So, if one of our teachers wanted to go to Ogden and work in a high poverty school to increase their stipend, that would actually happen. So, that's the only reason why it's stretched over a three-year period on the award. It's a good question. It's a complicated answer, but it's a great question. What other questions do you have, board members?
I'm just trying to know, so...
I'm just trying to...
They're bullying me.
No, we just appreciate the fact that you've put this much time and effort into it in that committee. That was a lot of work. And as you stated, you'll be ahead of the deadlines, so I'm excited to see where we're at. It's exciting to see 20, minimum of 25 teachers being engaged in it.
Yeah, well, we went fast, because if we landed on option one, that was going to be problematic time-wise, because it would have required a lot more work and effort. And some, I would have had to hit the politics a little bit to try to get that to pass, so... Anyway, don't have to worry about that, so now we're ahead of the game.
I do have a question.
Alright.
Calm down, Robin. Just, I got a question. How do you, how do you choose who's on these committees? Like, how did you choose who's on this?
So, yeah, now I got to remember.
Way back when.
Usually what I'll do is contact principals, or I'll talk to our directors and say, "Hey, who do you think would, you know, would..." We wanted people that would speak their mind. That's always important on these higher-level committees. We don't want someone that's just going to sit there and say, "Yeah, that sounds good." So, that factored into it. I didn't hand-select any of them, so they were all people that were referred to me. I know we tried to get, we tried to get at least, you know, teachers that represented like career technical education, and elementary education, and core subjects at the, so we tried to mix that up a little bit.
Any other questions, board members?
Mistelin, do you have any other memory of how we, you probably remember better than I on how we selected the teachers? Mistelin and I worked pretty hand-in-hand on this.
Robin, you asked a question earlier about surrounding districts. Terrar Academy did not opt in, Duchene District is participating. It's fine, I have the list right in front of me right now. No, DAGA is not participating. The list is public, you can see it at usu.edu's website, but if anyone else wants to know.
And just so the board knows, my understanding is, is that more than half of the teachers in the state of Utah are represented, because some of the biggest school districts are participating. So, there's a lot of teachers involved in this statewide.
This is a good, like, general overview, but are there any, like, fine-tuning, like, for example, are we going to drop out one outlier per class? Or is there some things we did to try to make sure that we don't penalize a teacher for taking a difficult student, or...
So, so the actual criteria, if you look at, I'm going to go back to that slide, okay? The student achievement growth data, it's not really going to be us that determines that. That's going to be an algorithm, it's already developed, it's been used in other states, it'll be used in our state. And it's based on student growth, and not from, not growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. It's based on the growth trajectory from the time the student begins state testing. So, the data's actually more valid the older a kid is. The toughest is kindergarten, because that'll only be based on growth for one year. But all the other students that are tested, it's going to be based on a growth trajectory over their career in state testing. So, you get a kid that's a junior in high school, they literally are going to look at that growth trajectory, even though it crosses assessments, right? And then, with that growth trajectory, they're comparing their score that year to see, let's see, they're expected to grow this much, how much did they actually grow? It's an algorithm, and it's complicated, but it's valid, and it's valid for a low-performing kid, that might even have a disability, a kid that speaks a second language, kid that's an honor student. It's valid for all of them, because it's looking at their growth trajectory and comparing the progress that year to the, so it's really, it's a research-based proven method. We don't even have to worry about it. It's going to be handled by the state. And that's the biggest indicator. The one we have to worry the most about, in my opinion, teacher evaluation. Like, we got to make sure, you know, that we continue, one thing we've started doing this year is, is we're looking at inter-rater reliability, and we're training at our DLMs, we're doing this at walkthroughs, making sure that we're consistent when we walk into a teacher's classroom with what we see and how we rate them. So, we've been working hard on that, and we've gotten pretty good at it. It's pretty amazing. We get together now doing our walkthroughs, and the consistency from one raider to another is, it's not perfect, it never is perfect, but it is really good, so...
Any other questions?
So, two clarifications, back to the committee question. It's required that the committee was 50 percent teachers, so that's exactly what ours was, was 50 percent teachers. We tried to get a cross-section from all levels, and we looked at years of experience, and we did rely on our principals to make recommendations. The other thing, just clarification, it's not 25 teachers that will get it, it's 25 percent, right? So, if we have 200, which is a rough estimate, then we'll have 50 teachers who are recommended to the state.
Yeah.
That's right, so it'll be more than 25.
So, when this goes to the state, what is their criteria to choose the top 5 percent out of?
Yeah, and that was one of our other concerns with going with the other option. Or, when we looked at the criteria, if we were to bring in something like collaboration, we were worried about how that would impact us as we're in the state comparison group. And again, it's algorithm-based, but what the state will do is, they'll bring in the criteria from all of the school districts, right? I'm not even, I can't wrap my head around this really well, because again, it's all math, it's all mathematics. But they bring in the criteria that all school districts are using, and they formulate averages based on that data, but that's how, that's how they rate the teachers. So, it's kind of weird, because you will have some school districts that bring in optional criteria, and I'm really not sure how that's going to work. We'll see. That's one other reason why we felt pretty comfortable with student achievement data and professional evaluation, because those are weighted the heaviest.
So, you're saying that we want our teachers to compete well on state level, then when they're professionally evaluated, we should err to the hys?
Oh, they're going to do great. Yeah.
You okay, board members?
Yeah, so, let me address that, too. So, with the professional evaluation, we, we, we all, is it a five-point scale the state's going to make us use? Yeah, so they're going to require us to convert, whatever their overall performance is, we have to convert it to a five-point scale. That way, there's consistency from district to district across the state. So, if our teachers average a four, but Duchene averages a five, yeah, they're going to have the upper hand on us. But nevertheless, right, it's teacher by teacher. So, our teachers that score a five are going to, they're going to perform better against their state colleagues than the teachers that might have a three or a four. So, it's important.
So, I'm sure when you start to tally that, I mean, we do it, we have numerous supervisors that rate their employees differently, and you take that comparison, and you put AI to it, and it'll actually bring it to where they all rated high, so their comparisons are a little bit lower. It just, it works.
Yeah.
It just works. There's no advantage or disadvantage to it.
So, the board will be seeing and approving the teacher evaluation policy by July, so you'll be able to see that and how that will impact this, and have some input on that as well, so...
Yeah, I don't believe the process of being able to inflate it would work.
So...
Or somebody that grades low. I mean, there are supervisors that grade really low, and there are supervisors on the average grade high, and you throw it into the...
Well, that's why we're performing exercises to get inter-rater reliability. That's important. Yeah, we're working hard on it. And the, what Mistelin just mentioned is a heavy lift that we're going to be taking part of between now and July is a program review, an evaluation of our teacher evaluation framework. So, we've got a calendar and a timeline in place for that. We're kicking it off here real soon.
Troy and Rodrigo, no, they're in charge of all this. Just kidding, I'm delikating.
No, I didn't. Mistelin does, though.
We're approaching, we have to...
Yeah.
Okay, you ready to move on, board?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have anything for leadership, Gavin, Superintendent?
What time is it? We have, this is just our normal, we have the book study, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Robin's going to lead us in it, and she's also, what do I call this, Robin? Make an announcement?
Oh, I'll do it.
Oh, no, we'll do that in.
Can we read a committee report?
No, we'll do that in committee reports, I'm sorry. Take us away, Robin.
All right. So, we've been doing book studies, and I am presenting chapter four from the disciplines, the four disciplines of execution. I'm pretty sure I'm going to send this book to every legislator after I get to sit through every Friday at those meetings. Okay, anyway, that was a joke. Hang on, I got a, I have a little presentation so that I stay on task. So, is there anything, sorry, just a sec.
Robin, you go to Apple TV one.
Okay. Something weird's happening already. I hate, what's going on? Just a second. Okay, wait, I just, oh, I was going to Canvas. Canva. All right, getting there.
Oh, we could have it.
Put me on the hot seat. Okay, just a sec. There's a lot smarter people in this room that could do this. All right, so, I'm going to stick on, stay on task. So, this is talking about discipline four, create a cadence of accountability. And before I start, I'm going to ask our musical person on our, I'm sure you're all super musical on our board, but Tanya, what do you think of when you think of cadence? I was really interested in this word.
I think just like staying together, like in a pattern.
Staying together in a pattern? Okay, all right, okay. All right, I actually meant to ask that after I did this. So, quick recap, so hold that thought. Discipline one was to focus on the wildly important goals, WIGs. So, chapter one was all about, rather than having a whole bunch of goals and spreading it out over, across many initiatives, just having one or two goals. Discipline two was act on the lead measures, and, sorry, that's just, lead measures were the steps you take today, the daily steps to get to your final goal or your lag goal. So, for instance, I mean, we all put it into terms that we know, but so, so I used to, I had a dance team right here that my lag, my wig, was to be able to have all of them ride unicycles in summer parades, right? So, my lead measures was what they had to do to be able to do that. And they first had to be able to pedal three times, and this was every week, they had to pass this off. So, they, the lead was three pedals, half a gym pedal or a cross independently, full gym pedal independently ride, and then, when they could do that, then I could actually start. Anyway, there was lots of, you know, milestones that they had to hit. Or if you want to get an A in a class, that's your goal, that's your lag, you have, one of those things you have to do to get that. So, anyway, that was chapter two. And then, chapter three was the discipline of keep a compelling scoreboard, and that's tracking your progress, and we talked about creating a visible scoreboard, and this is stuff that everyone's doing, but so, one, two, and three is bring the focus, clarity, engagement. And four is, it's, that's the game. So, if you think about executing, so think about Super Bowl 59, you might have had the greatest plays in the world, but who executed that day and who didn't? So, that's what, this is, this is what four was about, more about execution. So, this is what brings the team members all together, 4D makes it happen, it's the win, the goal achieved no matter what is happening around you. Okay, so now cadence, because I was really curious about this in the chapter, what is, why do you say that one more time, Tanya, what you talked about?
I looked it up, because I was feeling a little confused myself.
Oh, well, I gave you a chance.
Yeah, so, there's two different, so, kind of rhythm, like sticking with the rhythm is probably a good way of putting it. There's other, there's other forms of cadence in music, so I wasn't sure what we were, you know, like when harmonies come together at the end of a piece, how they resolve, so, but rhythm might be the best.
Exactly, and I think they lean, he leans, the authors lean into that metaphor quite a bit, but I just want to play something for you real quick. I'm using lots of technology today, as you can see, I'm...
She's growing.
Yeah, I'm growing, and I'm not a boomer anymore. Okay, see if you can figure out what cadence is in this. My cadence, if you need to pass a bit, and it's predictable, regular, and so, that's what they talk about in the syllabus, so, okay. So, that, right at the very first of the chapter, they talk about, he talks about two different outcomes, the same, same goal, to summit Mount Everest, and I don't know how many of you have read John Krakauer's Into Thin Air, but, and he mentions this, he talks about, it's like on the second page, actually, into the chapter, he talks about that, in the Krakauer, their wig is to summit, and one group, they fall apart, they all, it's, there's a lot of, I'll just read this real fast. There were blizzards, high 62 mile-per-hour winds, high-altitude signals, but the group began to fall apart, they didn't stick together. They all had the same goal, and, but it fell apart, and this was high stakes, this was eight people died in that. So, and then, the other one is Eric Weinmeier, who probably, you know, five years later, and he was the first blind person to summit Mount Everest. And what was the difference? Well, he had an amazing team, and they did what they called tent meetings every night, and they would huddle and talk about what had to be done, and they took care of each other, and actually, I had just, this is so interesting, I had just listened to this thing, and I'm going to play what he has to say about it, it's really short.
I actually want to talk to you about the actually impressive things that you did. There might be people out there who say, "Oh, he's a blind guy who climbed Everest, I guess he just was roped to some guide who did the climbing." No, you do it by feel, right?
Yeah, and I did have great guides, though. I mean, like on Everest, I had, we had 12 friends and eight... friends and eight Sherpas on our team, and those guys were helping me get through like the Kumbu Icefall. I mean, the Kumbu Icefall is right out of base camp on Everest, and it's a blind person's worst nightmare. It doesn't meet Americans with disability act standards, I mean. So, yeah, they were ringing, jingling a bell in front of me and talking to me and telling me which ropes to clip into, so for sure, blind guys, at least as far as I know, don't climb Everest alone, and I owe my team everything.
Anyway, pretty, pretty interesting. So then, just, you talked about this, Tanya, cadence means a regular repeated pattern or rhythm of something. So in business or, or in organization, teamwork, it's, it refers to regular schedule of meetings, check-ins or updates. For example, a weekly cadence means having a regular meeting every week. This is from this chapter. I love some of this stuff, I just, I just pulled some of this stuff out. Four, discipline of accountability, making a personal commitment to the entire team to move the scores forward and then following through in a disciplined way. The team meets at least weekly, no longer than twenty to thirty minutes, they set, they have a set agenda, and they keep it moving and fast-tempoed, fast-paced, there you go, there's your cadence. And then they establish, just really talked a lot, and they talked about precision, consistent, specific, and then creative and innovative problem solving, accountable to their peers, and commitments are generated from the participants, not, I mean, there's a facilitator and a leader, but I really love this idea, combined, so just think about the combined energy and the results for their one to two specific actions which directly affect, affects the lead measures which moves the needle forward towards the WIG. So consistent, constant, relentless, powerful. So this, and then they just talked about, hey, this is how the agenda works, you, at first, you account, they report on their commitments from that week, they review the scoreboard, again, it's a visual scoreboard, we've talked about that, they learn from their successes and failures, and, and I loved the part that really talked about collaborating and problem solving and helping that, say that person didn't make their goal that week, then they maybe have the goal, the same goal the next week, but they don't continue, it's like they had new goals, one or two, every week, and then the clear path to make new commitments for the coming week, they clear the path. And then, one other thing, I, this really resonated with me, just again, consistent, same, same day, same time, sacred, they talked about the sacred of this, and they're uber folk, uber focused, keep the whirlwind out, I really learned a lot, actually, thinking about whirlwind, which I feel like there's a lot of that lately, and so, and then the weekly, the fast-paced rhythm, and each team member is important and communicate progress and makes commitments to the team, and they're really focused on the scoreboard. And then, couple more things, just the successful WIG session, team members start bringing their best thinking as to how to influence the scoreboard through the lead measures, they commit to try new ideas, test hypotheses, and bring back the results, so it's a very safe place also, and collective problem solving and shared learning, love that. And then, I don't know if any of you picked up on this quote from Jack Welch, the legendary CEO from GE, he just, his quote, "Goals cannot sound noble," and it said but, but I think it's supposed to be nor, I don't know, "Goals cannot sound noble nor vague, targets cannot be so blurry that they can't be hit, your direction has to be so vivid that if you randomly woke one of your employees in the middle of the night and asked them, 'Where are we going?'" He, he or she could say, could still answer in a half-asleep stupor." So that was interesting. And then, any, you guys have any thoughts? I know that, those are just my takeaways, and enjoyed the chapter a lot. Any takeaways, you guys can, how do you apply it?
Robin, I think, I really enjoyed this chapter because I think if anyone tries, they can use this in their everyday life. Each one of us is, is different in different circumstances, but if you can't take this chapter and make your life more productive, then you didn't, then you didn't do it correctly. That's what I liked about it. Sorry, board members, any other comments or questions?
I just give her a plus for that presentation, that was really...
Superintendent? Yeah, you know, board members, I, obviously focusing on the lead measures is really important, but I think for me, this has been, if there's a silver bullet in continuous improvement, it's the cadence of accountability. It, it's, it's really, I believe, made a difference in our school district. There's a number of things that we're doing to create that cadence from regular partnership meetings, our weekly director meetings, we have a WIG session every week, we look at data every week, we, we have beginning of the year, middle of year, end of year data reviews with our principals, we've been doing that for a couple of years now. So there's some things we're doing that are regular, and they've created that cadence, and it's all data and accountability-based. I don't, I don't know if our principals feel the same way, I know they're on, they're on the receiving end of some asks, some big asks with some of those things, but, but we know where we, where we stand, right? We know where we're at, and we know where we're going, and so I, I really appreciate the author's work on this, and this particular chapter for me brings the whole process together. And we've seen good examples of schools in our district where the principals have created strong cadence of accountability in their schools, through the number of observations they do in classrooms to their scoreboards. Some of the schools have, I hope you've seen them as you've been out there, there's been, I was at the high school at the play and had to take a picture of, of, of the scoreboard, it was right there, it was huge, right on the TV monitor where everybody could see it, and you, everyone knows, like, this is where we stand according to our lead measures, so, good, good chapter, thank you, that was a great presentation.
Thanks. What I'd like to know, too, I mean, is it really working, the one to two goals, and do they, the other thing that I gleaned from this is that they talked about, they talked about leaving everything out, I mean, being really focused in those meetings so they're super efficient, super snappy. Is that really happening where you're not talking about, I mean, it said, if you have other things to talk about and you need to do deep dives, you save that for another time, you do that a different time, is that, I don't know, is that...
Our, our WIG meetings, we do it as a component of our weekly directors' meeting because it's so hard to get everybody together, so we just, so, so no, it's, it's not, the meet, the whole meeting is, is certainly not just focused on the WIG, but that, that segment, we, we do focus during that time to, to the WIG.
Super cool. Okay, that was your book study. I'll read it.
Okay, sounds good. Time for committee reports. I'm gonna do things backwards today, we're gonna start with Tanya.
Okay. So in policy committee, we, Brian brought a, brought a policy that you didn't see today, and basically he was taking, let's see, how many, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten? Is that right? Ten policies and combining them into one? I might've counted that wrong, but it's a lot. So it would be all combined down into point zero zero seven, point zero one one five. And there was so much to cover there that we just made the decision to take it home and go through it thoroughly so that we could all have more to contribute because there was just so much to go through, all of those policies. It actually didn't take me as long as I thought, and it, it made a lot of sense when I went through it, he did a really good job, and so you'll probably see that next month. And then, we did, at the end of the meeting, talk a little bit, oh, well, two things coming up, we haven't seen these yet, but upcoming employee dress code and a sick leave bank policy will be addressed. And then we talked at the end, there was a little bit of discussion about what we might do with the dress code policy for the students because we're looking at the dress code policy for the teachers, and so we had a meeting with the principals and Dr. Woodford and Christie, I don't wanna forget anybody, and Denise, and we kinda met together and just discussed some of the concerns and the, the thing, the challenges in implementing and enforcing a dress code, and actually, Denise had a really good idea, I don't know, are you willing to kind of share kind of what we came up with, just a quick?
We just talked about kinda maybe turning and trying to, I'm trying to think how to think, or how to say this, just...
Try and put you on the spot.
No, you're okay, just turning it into a positive and have student leadership maybe lead that, and kinda doing some test pilot stuff to see, you know, how we can get that school and the students and the parents behind us before we kinda slap down a policy on there, I think.
I really, I felt like it was really positive, I felt like Denise's approach was really positive in just inspiring and motivating the students to kind of see a new vision of maybe raising the bar, but, but we felt like it's gonna be ineffective to just come in and just try to enforce something out of the blue. And so, anyway, I think that, I just really like it, and we're, it'll probably be a process to figure it out, and we'll come back and look at it and decide in the process if we then want to address the policy. But I, I did hear that there was some discussion at the high school, the students were kind of given some overview and a reminder that we have a dress code policy, and I really appreciated that, I know that's hard, and I know that, that's not an easy discussion to have, so I really appreciate it.
Are you doing facilities?
Oh, yeah, let's see, so we talked about the UMS buildings, the blue buildings behind, I think we're just waiting on the electricity to be moved, and then we can finally get rid of a few buildings there and make it look nice. I think that we're getting bids on making a plan for the parking lot for UMS, and I didn't quite understand the, I must've missed this discussion, you said there was Mazer, the driveway at Mazer, we're going to, you might wanna explain that.
To help us cut costs in the district this year, there's a bus lane that goes north of Mazer Water Improvement District that goes into the Mazer School, and eventually there, we've sold the property on the north and the property on the south, and so there's just a sixty-six foot right-of-way left there, and so instead of going there and repaving it this year, we're gonna patch a few potholes and push it down the road a little bit and get some more life out of that asphalt, because when we actually do that, we're gonna have to put a curb and gutter and a fence on, well, a curb, a cement barrier of some kind, and a fence on both sides of that, and work with Mazer Water, because they want to work with us on the boundary on that property that they bought from us, and so, for this year, I believe the plan is just going to be to patch a couple of potholes down through there so that the bus drivers don't have to bounce through, and, and that's the direction we're gonna go with it.
And do we wanna talk about the preschool, the steel that they're...
Sure.
If you drive by, it's still there, I assume? I haven't driven by in a few days.
Yeah, it's not left.
Okay, so if you, if you notice, it, everything is looking really nice and it's coming along beautifully, but above the entrances, there's some blue steel, and the way it was installed looks really bad, and it's really bumpy and just not, it just doesn't look the way that we would like it to, so maybe you wanna explain what, what we're doing with that, because you're the one that was handling it?
There we go. Yeah, so the, the company, the manufacturer actually came out, and, and there's been some discussion between the architect, the manufacturer, and the contractor, and they're trying to figure out why it did what it did, and, and they're trying to come up with a solution, but I've made it very clear that it's unacceptable and it has to be corrected. So I don't have any solid, as far as what they're going to, to do to fix it. Troy, I don't know if you wanna add, there was no AC meeting today that Troy attended. Yeah, I, they discussed it today, they are, they've, they've had the inspection, they've had the, the representatives out, they're now trying to formulate a plan on the best way to mitigate and remedy it so that it, we don't have these oil-can-style dents popping up in there when the, when the weather changes, because it, as it gets cooler, the dents expand or, or contract, actually, as it gets hotter, they, they, they expand, so it's gonna be an ongoing issue if we don't get this installed and fixed properly.
Just so everyone knows, the superintendent touched on it a little bit, he told them that it just wasn't acceptable, they had to do something to fix it, we wanted it looking nice like we had planned, so that will happen in the future, he will take care of that, but if you drive by, don't lose your hair over it, 'cause it looks horrible when, especially when the sunlight hits it just like, just right, looks like somebody's been bouncing baseballs off of it, so.
But everything else looks amazing, and it's just, there's always something, no matter what you do in a building project, so it will be taken care of.
Denise?
Oh, Risk Committee. We actually haven't met, we meet next week, so I don't have anything to report.
Cool. Robin?
First of all, thank you for providing the minutes, or the notes from committee meetings, that's the first time I've seen that, it just popped up, actually, so, okay, thank you. So each board member received tickets, right, for the, all right, so this is just from the foundation, and appreciate the foundation, they've, we also did an ask of them, and they had to meet extra last week, they were great, but, so just, this is from Verdi Heaney, who couldn't be here tonight, I'm just gonna read it, just, "We are celebrating our twenty-first year of bringing tellers," so this is for the storytelling festival, which is coming up next week. "We are celebrating our twenty-first year of bringing tellers to our community, this year's tellers are Josh Goforth, an Appalachian, or if you say Appalachian, however you wanna say it, teller, and Amy Blumel of Chickasaw, a Chickasaw Native American. All fourth graders will be bused in on Wednesday, March nineteenth, to hear them, and AVEC and VMS and UMS will also hear them on Wednesday or Thursday. They also held their, their first Vernal Equinox Youth Storytelling Competition," so this is local, "and they had three winners, and they will, each of those winners will be also telling a story before the headliner national teller is on. They're excited for the growing, to be growing our own tellers here and look forward to hearing their stories." And then she also said, "We so appreciate the school district's continued support of the storytelling festival and their in-kind donation of the use of the VMS auditorium." She says, "Bring your family and friends and enjoy some great storytelling. I go every year, and I'm never disappointed, they're masterful and, and the stories are really meaningful." So, anyway, so that is Wednesday, the nineteenth, right?
Or twentieth, yeah.
Or twentieth, nineteenth or twentieth, and it goes to a great cause, that's the foundation's fundraiser, one of their fundraisers. And then, just USBA, just remember, is this the same night as the storytelling?
The nineteenth.
I'll go on the twentieth. Okay, so just remember, we're meeting Cafe Rio for USBA, and that's the Spring Regional Meeting where we get the legislative update from 2025 legislature, and then, they really do want our input, so I emailed you out a quick, there's a whole bunch of topics, if we could come with three or four, they said five, but if we wanna do, if we wanna go with the four disciplines of execution, we'll just bring two. Anyway, so that's things that, for next legislative session, and I think one of their big pushes, USBA really, after this legislative session, is to really work on relationships with, with our legislators, and, and the ones that are making a lot of the education bills, so people maybe not reaching out, so I, I just thought that was interesting, and then, really nothing from UB Tech, other than they continue to do their workforce promise initiative, which is great, it's soft skills, I love, I love that they pushing for that. And they do have another event, another fundraising event, and I've never been to this, it's really fun, the Fine Art Auction, it's also a fundraiser for scholarships for UB Tech, and it's a, it's local artists, and they auction the pieces off, they're like, Chris Mannwaring always has something from the high school, I mean, art, amazing teacher and artist, and we should get student stuff in there, we should get some of those, anyway, it's a great cause, and that's coming up in April.
You don't have to be there to do that, you can all-in on that auction as well.
Yeah, exactly, and this is, can I just, this is not one of my reports, but just, this is interesting, from USU, I just, I'm not on any committee for this, or, I'm just a chamber, and they did a quick snapshot, and this, I found this fascinating, that their first-generation students is, I, I didn't, fifty point three pers, no, forty-nine point seven percent are first, are first-generational students going to higher education, thought that was an interesting tidbit, all right.
Todd?
Uh...
Todd?
Uh, Finance Committee meeting. We had a good meeting. We, we obviously chatted a little bit about the finances of the driveway. Items over 50K. We'll talk about that. Food on the, it's actually on the agenda. We talked a little bit about our taxes. There are those individuals that request or put in for refunds based on assessment values of their properties. And in the past, it's been a couple of hundred thousand, 250 as much as, I believe the last year, we were almost to that half a million dollars. We're looking at a little 1.5 million possibly this year. Those numbers aren't specific yet.
Not set in stone yet. The last two years that we've received data from it's been a half million a year, so 23 and 24.
So, so we're looking at, you know, as a, as, as that group, Troy's group, methods of actual recovery and, and methods to look at our judgment levy. We've, we've not done that since I've been here. I don't know, I believe Dave's been on the board a couple more years. I don't believe we've ever done a judgment levy in any sort to help recover those funds. But no, a judgment levy goes back out to everybody and resilences to, to fund for those deficits. And so, as we become tighter in, in our budget, the necessity for that may be a reality. So, just a heads up, we'll be chatting much more about that as well as, and we're looking at methods to, to recover some funds. Troy's been hit up a number of times on, on investments where we're investing as we've obviously brought our budgets or our totals are down as far as in each of our budget or our silos.
Fund balances, yeah.
Our fund balances have dropped, so it's important that we put that money in the right direction. And, and there's some opportunities that they're going to look in. Do, a number of companies have reached out and continue to reach out to us. Troy and his group met with some of them the other day. And so that will give us some opportunity to, to move certain funds into some options similar to CDs and those type of things to where we don't tie up all our money. There's some methods and, and they're going to look into that and report back on methods of, of gaining some, some interest on those funds. And, and this is one you don't, definitely, I know principals, you've been engaged in this, probably most of you, if not all of you. Our enrollment base is obviously coming down. As we look at that enrollment base across the board, that's, it could require cuts. You know, is it strictly just a district level cut? Is it a bus driver cut? Is it a teacher cut? You know, how do we look at that? And that's, that's always a challenge. And so, I think most of you have met with Troy and Rodrigo and had that opportunity to, to share your opinions of where we're at on teacher base, overall staff. Yeah, those numbers can be 14 to 16, as possibly as high as 18. If you note, we've been asking for some time. Our teachers, 91% of our teachers are 20 years or less. And so retirement is, you know, that attrition is not going to happen in maybe the fashion that it has in the past. And so there's some, there's going to be some tough conversations. And so...
What's the historical attrition, though?
The historical attrition, I, I think you gave me, Dr. Leish, I don't recall exactly what it is. We assume that it'll take care of some of this, but right now, they, they actually send out a ask for those that are willing. I believe three are planning on retiring this year, which is very low in comparison to what we've had in the past. And, yeah, and so, so those, those numbers have us concerned as well as, we, we also ask for those that will be leaving. I believe we give them a little bit of a bonus if they let us know prior to. And those numbers are low. And so, looks like everybody wants to stay in a good school district, so. Troy, you may have better numbers now.
It's kind of a double edged sword because, you know, you, you're doing a great job with your retention. You're not losing people, which is a very, very good thing. But at the same time, we just don't have the natural rate of attrition that we would on a, on a typical year. I mean, most teachers of the district have indicated they're, they're planning to come back. And so, as we try to rebalance and look at every school, it's, you know, there, there are all kinds of options. You know, some schools, they have a retirement, maybe a teacher from one school to another, things like that. We're doing everything that we can so that we don't have to go through, you know, reduction in force. That's, that's the last thing that we want to do.
Yeah.
The very last thing.
And our goal is to keep that teacher-student ratio the same as it always has been. We're not going to expand or, or, you know, I believe that's 24 to 29, I believe somewhere in there, isn't it, Sue?
That, that's the key. We're, we're not increasing class sizes. We haven't changed that ratio. Since I've been here, that ratio has not changed. I, I don't know how long it's been in place before I came. I think quite a while. So, so there really isn't a change in the formula. It's just that we're losing kids.
Correct.
And we have to respond to that.
Yeah. And so, so we don't want to put fear out there to the teachers because obviously, my opinion is, is UN is on the rise. When you start to hear of cuts, it, it creates that, a stress level to where maybe some aren't performing, feel they're, you know, they, they stopped performing in a way that they would because of stress level. And so hopefully we just, we, we think that we can take care of the biggest part of that in some way, if not move those teachers around to those that do leave. And, and there will be some change and there will be some stress levels, but, but we'll try and keep that as minimal as possible. And Dr. Leish is, is, is well aware of our, our opinion on that and trying to keep good individuals as well. So, I, I know those are tough conversations. So thank you, principals, for, for your willingness to do that. Small school funding is on the positive, is increasing. Rodrigo stated. We don't know the details on that. We'll come back with more details. And we also talked about the need for, we talked about investment, but we need, as a board, come up with a policy. So maybe take it to the policy committee. And we talked about, you know, as far as the financial side of an HB1 policy, financially, how would we go about that and, and have a policy in place to where we don't have, you know, an outcry in the community of sort. We can do decisions based on policy, emotions. So, I believe that's where we're at.
Todd, I'd like to interject one thing that I think that's important on the Finance Committee as we're talking about. You know, it's always easier to get bigger than it is to get smaller. And so, I think it's important to note that everyone in the district is trying to do, we're not just looking at teachers to make up that deficit. There's going to be some cuts, a cut, some cuts at the district office. There are going to be some cuts at the bus garage. And so, we've looked clear down through to, so that everybody's doing their part. Because it's not supposed to be about business, but still on the other hand, sometimes it is about business. There has to be enough funds come in to, to pay the bills. And so, I think it's important that you guys know and the community knows that each part, each department is doing their part. The hardest part is, is that it's hard to take any out of Donnie Laws' budget. We're not getting rid of the building. We don't have any less square footage, any less parking lots, all them kind of things. So, his is, his is the, the hardest one. Although, they are being mindful in lots of ways in that department. Can we get two more years out of the track? Can we get any more life before we replace something so that, and that continues on down the road if we get, we got two years longer out of our football field than what was originally planned. So, if you do that every time, next time we replace it, we'll be four years farther down the road. So there is things that we can do there, but it's hard to keep the same square footage of area for him to take care of and ask him to cut the exact same amount out of his budget that maybe everyone else is doing. And I think that's important.
Good point. Thank you.
President.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Anything else on committee reports? Okay. Superintendent or Troy, do you have anything that we missed or?
No.
Didn't represent well?
I think you captured it.
Okay. I don't think we have, you think we have enough time?
Yeah, if we just do that and, yeah, it's going to take a lot of minutes.
Okay. Board members, I think we have enough time to go into closed session. The need that we have there won't take us very long if we stay on track. So I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I move that the UNA School District Board of Education enter into closed session for the following. Strategy session to discuss the sale of real property.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We need to roll call in. Todd, would you?
Massey, aye.
McClellan, aye.
Maynard, aye.
McKee, aye.
Schivers, aye. Time is 5:41. Yeah.
Yeah, and you'll still see that. You'll see they sent out that notice.
Yeah.
Okay.
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 Okay, board members. I'd entertain a motion to close the work session.
I'll make a motion to close the work session.
Tanya made a motion.
I'll second it.
Denise seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Welcome to the UNA School District Board Business Meeting. Today is March twelfth, twenty twenty-five. The meeting is being held at eight twenty-six South fifteen hundred East Naples, Utah. Present at the meeting is Board President Dave Shivers, Vice President Tanya McKee, Robin McClellan, Todd Massey, Denise Maynard, Superintendent Dr. Rick Woodford, and myself, Troy Timothy, Business Administrator. The time is six o'clock PM.
Welcome, everyone. What a great crowd to have here. How many chairs is here, Superintendent?
About one, about one sixty.
About a hundred and sixty, so there's got to be a hundred and eighty of us here. So, welcome, everybody. We're going to start our meeting off with a reverence from Aaron Olson and a pledge of allegiance by Paul Buschowski.
Our Father in Heaven, we give thee thanks for this opportunity to come together as community members. We pray for thy guidance to help us to make decisions that are in the best interest of our students and our community. We're thankful for the opportunities that we each have to learn and to grow, and we pray that we can continue to strive for excellence. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Will the audience rise and please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Paul and Aaron, Principal Aaron, for helping us with that. Student Board Member Report, Wilson Lysick. We're going to turn the time over to you.
All right. Okay. It's been a busy month at UNA, this last month, so I'm going to break into it really fast. Sterling Scholars did really well at their Northeast Region Competition on Monday at UVU. I know the superintendent was down there handing out awards. How was that?
It was awesome. That's the best our group has performed, I think, since I've been here, and we just had some amazing Sterling Scholars this year.
Yeah, yeah. We had ten. Three of those won their categories: Lily Carlson in Visual Arts, Stockton Jolly in Science, and Terron Nash in Skilled and Technical Sciences. We also had two runners-up: Tommy Cruz in Computer Technology and Ethan Pierce in Speech, Theater Arts, and Debate. Congratulations to all of our Sterling Scholars and their advisors, Mrs. Holmes and Mrs. Dean. Earlier today, the list of finalists for this year's UNTA High School Musical Theater Awards was released, and we have eleven finalists nominated. For Hadestown Edition, we have Benson Baumgartner, who is a finalist for Best Actor, and Reed Uasila is a finalist for Best Supporting Actor, and then we also have Aurelia Harris for Best, is a finalist for Best Actress. UNTA High School is also a finalist for Best Lighting Design and Best Student Scenic Design. For Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, we are also a finalist for Best Musical, Best Ensemble, Best Director, Best Costume Design, Best Technical Crew, and Best Scenic Design Categories. We also had other students nominated for awards who didn't make it to finals. We had Cecilia Benjamin, who was nominated for Best Actress, and Ethan Pierce is nominated for Best Cameo in their roles in Hadestown. Ethan Pierce was also nominated for Best Actor in Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. Ashlyn Adams was nominated for Best Actress in The Chocolate Factory, and Mae Coonrad was nominated for Best Supporting Actress, and Macy Carlson and Sam Sorenson were nominated for Best Feature Performers. The award ceremony is April twelfth in Salt Lake. We announced our Teacher of the Year and Classified Employee of the Year earlier this week. Mrs. Zufelt is the Math Teacher of the Year, and then the Classified Employee is Mrs. Hacking in the Finance Office. They both really deserved that recognition. By now, you guys know that our boys won their fifth state championship for wrestling in a row. I know Coach Keddie's about to talk on that, so I will let him brag about you guys, and I'll save that for him. For Girls Wrestling, the team took third at state. Lena Sharp and Sadie Rhodes won individual state titles. It was Sadie Rhodes' second individual state title, and they both had commitments tonight, and Coach Sharp left earlier today to take a few girls to Nationals in Iowa, so they couldn't be here tonight. Boys Soccer won their home opener last week against, or in a, on Friday, on a penalty kick in double overtime, and they played Saint Joseph today, and they play Kearns High School tomorrow. Our baseball and softball teams are both doing really well. They are headed down to Saint George for the weekend, where the boys will play Friday and Saturday in the KJ Harris Classic, and softball plays South Sevier tomorrow and then heads to Saint George for the Warrior Elite Tournament. Boys Tennis is also doing really well. They spent last weekend down in Saint George playing a lot of tennis, and they're invited to the Carbon Invitational in Price this weekend. If the weather holds up, we will expect some good victories down there as well. Track and Field is also headed to Carbon. Is it cutting out, or am I tripping? It's cutting out? Okay. We'll see if this one's better. Sorry about that, guys. It must be me. Hold up. Let me hold it a little bit closer. Yeah, but Track and Field will be down at Carbon High School for an Invitational this weekend as well. And then Girls Lacrosse plays their first home game tomorrow at four-thirty at Coach Belcher Stadium, and then the Annual Mister and Miss UNA will be held next Wednesday, March nineteenth, at six-thirty in the high school auditorium. You can buy tickets online at gofan.co, and they will also be sold at the door. And since this happens before our next meeting, Junior Prom will be April fifth, and Promenade will be before the dance. The whole community is invited, so be on the lookout for more information on that. Thank you, guys.
It's always fun to watch him. He can give you a lot of information in a hurry. Celebrations. I'm going to turn the time over to Superintendent Woodford, and it's our favorite part of the night, and so we'll get started on them.
Sorry about those that have to stand. This is a big group. We have a lot of celebrations here tonight, and I know some of you are here for other reasons that are on the agenda, but thank you. This is the best part of the meeting, right? We get to celebrate all the amazing things that are happening in UNA School District. We're going to start with Principal Aaron Olson. If you'll please come forward. He's out in the hallway.
We have a celebration from Vernal Middle School, and I'm going to introduce our teacher who works with, one of our CTE teachers, Mr. Brian Ottley, for this recognition.
Thank you. So I teach, the, one, one of the things I teach is business and marketing, and Denton was one of my students earlier this year in the first trimester. One of the activities that they're expected to know is the stock market. And so, one of the things that I do is I found a program online called The Stock Market Game, and they get to, they get to play with it, and it's a, what they call a real-life simulation, where it is a simulation, they, they get fake money, because I don't have a hundred thousand dollars to give each student, so, but they base everything and they get to play the stock market for real. So everything is based off of real-world things. We got to celebrate his partner, Tracy, last month, but Denton had to go get wisdom teeth out, so that fun stuff. But him and his partner were able to take second in the state of Utah in the middle school category, which was out of like a hundred and forty teams there, and the first in Vernal Middle School. They earned, in about a month and a half period, they earned about, it was about thirty thousand dollars in the stock market, and I don't know who came up with the idea, but they just found the right stock to, you know, ride until the end and everything like that. What stock was that?
Tesla.
There you go. So Tesla, so apparently that was a hot stock back then.
Donald Trump won.
There you go. So, we just want to congratulate him. He got an award. There was a, there was a cash prize with it, and then there was a medal that he got. So, it is just awesome that they, they were able to take it and run with it. Very proud of both of them on their team, and congratulations.
We're not letting you off that easy. Good job.
Our next celebration, we're going to invite Coach Philip Keddie up in just a minute. I've got just a few things I want to say. You know, I believe after Coach Keddie, I can't remember if it was after his first state championship or his second, I heard him say that he had a goal to win ten straight, and I left there thinking, yeah, right, like, maybe ten, but ten straight? He's halfway there. It's unbelievable. Here we are, sitting here at number five. I've never seen anything like this. I've been around sports my whole life. You hear about dynasties, right? These wonderful coaches that come in and, and programs that are developed over years. That's, that's what's happening. That's, that's what's happening here in U Inta. And I, many of you that are in the program understand this and know this, but this, this starts when kids are really young in our community, right? Coach Katty has, has a great relationship with, with, is it USA Wrestling Coach? Is that, is it under that umbrella? I don't, I don't know, it's youth wrestling?
There's a bunch of different brands that do youth programs.
It's kinda U Inta Youth Wrestling, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and, but really has invested the time and the energy with those youth feeder programs. And, and just done a tremendous job building a championship caliber program. We need to embrace this, and, and just talking with him earlier, right? We, we, we can't, like, even though this is the fifth one in a row, we can't downplay it. It's, it's an amazing accomplishment to even win one. So, with that, I'd like to give him a round of applause, and then ask him to come up.
Alright, so, this opposite of last year. So I want these guys to come up here with me while I talk about them. So come on up here and stand behind me. So obviously, we don't have everybody here tonight. There's a lot of them missing, but baseball, and actually got a couple of kids heading to Iowa at that national tournament as well, but. First thing I gotta say is, I have to say thanks to this community, this school board, and to this district, because if you look at the back of our shirts this year, they said, "Expect greatness." And it was basically for, a reminder for us to understand how we need to train and expect to win, and what we want to do for ourselves individually. There's only one way you can really achieve greatness, and you have to have that at every level. You have to have it from a school board, you have to have it from the school district, you have to have it from the community, their parents. They have to understand and know that it's gonna take a lot of sacrifice, it's gonna take a lot of hard work, a lot of things that go into trying to reach that level of greatness, knowing that we're never gonna be perfect, but by trying to get perfect, then they can be, they can be great. And so, I have to say thank you to you guys, thank you to this community, because if you look at, from the very lowest level, which is our Tiger League, I get the support I need from everybody to try to run that the way I want to, to help them be successful and to help them win. So thank you to you guys, I appreciate it. Now, like I said, I don't want it to be watered down at all. This state title, like, belongs to these guys, and this year. But with that being said, as far as I can tell, all the research I've done, this is the best team that's ever come out of U N A. Like, that's how dominant they were. Twenty-eight team titles. This team broke the Warrior Classic All-Time Team Scoring Record, which was a tournament for, that's ran for 33 years. And the T O C Team Points Record, that's ran for 53 years. And this team broke both of those records. If you add up the second place, second and third place team from the state tournament, they tie us. And so, it's not just that these guys were good. They're the best ever from U N A. And so, that credit has to go to them, and it's pretty incredible and pretty amazing. And, little side note, Maddox isn't here, but we actually would've beat them by one, but I got one team point taken away at the state finals in Maddox's match, so technically, we did beat those two combined, right? If I, if I'd have known that, I probably would've kept my mouth shut to that ref, and maybe would've kept that team point. But anyways, took a team point, he probably could've took 50, it wouldn't have mattered. But, these guys earned it. So just a couple of individuals. First up, Michael, come over here for a second. So also, a first-ever, and something I'm extremely proud of. You look at the history of U N A Wrestling, you look at all our records, it always ends at three-time state champ. All these guys that have been so close, gone on to wrestle in college wrestling, D1 programs, we've never had a four-time state champion. Michael Alexander is the first one to ever do that. And I truly believe when you get, you like knock a door down like that, it allows the younger kids to see how attainable that is, make it realistic. It's something they can now set as a goal and be the next kid to be a four-timer. We have two already on our team that have a chance. Maddox is a freshman, and Ethan, who's a sophomore, who's won two. And they're both on their way to Iowa right now to wrestle at the national tournament. But, I really think when he opens a door like that, it allows opportunities for the younger kids. So I'm grateful for that, grateful for him, but also, the leadership he brought was something very different than I've seen from one of my state champions. He was a tremendous teammate. And you don't always see things like that, but he made kids that were uncomfortable, didn't necessarily fit in, didn't necessarily feel like they belonged, enjoy themselves, and belong, because of how much a state champ would cheer for them on the side of the mat. Where several different kids have said that this kid made wrestling fun for them. So I'm always grateful for that, and I appreciate him, and I appreciate the fact that he knocked that door down, so we can have a lot more go-get-four timers. Brody Rhodes, another state champion, two-time state champ, probably the toughest mentally kid I've ever coached. And it's probably because he's probably a little bit, you know, he might be a little bit crazy, which is in a good way, right? Like, the competitive edge that this kid has is nothing I've ever seen before. It's basically like, he doesn't ever want to get scored on, he doesn't ever want to lose, and he's willing to do anything it takes to get better. And, two-time state champ, he broke his hand at the All-Star Duel, and both of his two middle fingers were like the size of a sausage. And he walks off the mat, and he asked me if I thought that was from the tape. And I was like, "No, dude, that's not from the tape." He beat a kid that was, you know, ranked really high, had won and placed at a couple tournaments to be All-American, and he beat that kid with a broken hand. And then, the Saturday before the state tournament, with a torn meniscus, his knee locked up. We wrestle on Tuesday, so on Saturday, his knee locks. And I was panicked, obviously, because, you know, I just want these kids to be able to wrestle their best, and his knee was locked up, torn meniscus, it's still torn. But, he texted me on Sunday and said, "It doesn't matter, I'm gonna win on one leg anyway." And he did. And so that just tells you the type of kid he is, and going on a mission and gonna wrestle after that, and I'm really proud of him. Where's Parker? Oh, right here. So, these are the type of stories you always want to have as a coach. Parker Straight moved here from Las Vegas, Nevada, as a junior. And he did not place in the state tournament in Nevada, and he did not place as a junior. So as a never-placed-before wrestler, not very many people knew who Parker Straight was. Everybody in the state of Utah who wrestles knows who Parker Straight is now. And that's what he was able to do in one season, went from never placing at the state tournament, and was pretty dominant, and won a state title. So never placed and went to win a state championship. And that's what we want from kids stepping up every year, is looking at the example. Hey, it doesn't matter what happened last year, it doesn't matter. You are where you are right now, go take what you want. And so, I'm proud of Parker, state champion. Cannon. I won't take too long, but, a couple things. Cannon also moved here, he's from here, family's from here, but he moved here, and, so I only got two years with him, but Cannon did not qualify for the state tournament. Didn't place at the divisional tournament. He was an alternate, took ninth, you have to take top eight. And every year, we tell every single kid, you have to be ready. You have to train like you're in the tournament, you have to keep your weight down like you're in the tournament, you have to prepare like you're going to that tournament to win. So Cannon's ninth, he has to just keep his weight down, he has to show up at state, he has to go way in with no idea whether or not he's gonna get in. Somebody has to get hurt, doesn't pass skin checks, or miss weight for him to wrestle. We're all starting our warm-up, he's got his shoes on, and he's just waiting. They called me to the head table, Cannon Ufford's in the tournament. Ninth at divisionals, ninth at divisionals, so doesn't place top eight, comes to that tournament, gets into the tournament, loses first round to the number-one seed because now he's got a bad seed, wrestles his way all the way back, and in the blood round pins the guy to be a state placer. So, when you, when you got kids like Parker Straight and Cannon Ufford, who are the examples to the kids coming up later, hey, this is what you're capable of. Finish at the right time, wrestle at the right time, and you never know what's gonna happen going into that state tournament if you're prepared and doing the right thing. So Cannon Ufford will be a story I can tell now as a coach forever, about, hey, it doesn't matter, you prepare like you're going there to win, and Cannon is the example of that. Good job, buddy. So, we had, we had seventeen state placers, which is, I mean, like I said, this team is just like, I don't even know what to say. That state tournament on Tuesday night, we won seventeen of nineteen matches. We only lost two matches. That's all the blood round matches, so every kid that had a chance to place in the blood round won that match. And six of them were not favored, based on seeding. And then, in our semifinals, we had eight out of, eight out of ten win. So, pretty incredible run, dominant season, and, and I think, I'm extremely proud of them, and I just want to say, thanks to these guys, they deserve all the credit, and thanks to this community for allowing us to do what it takes to be great.
I know Coach Sharp is gone, do we have anybody else from Girls Wrestling here? I'm, I'm not sure that we do. Yep. Hey, those outside, you can, come on in, there's plenty of seats now that Wrestling's gone. So, come on in. Lass, Lass Hamilton, do you know if there's anyone from Girls Wrestling here? Okay. No wrestlers that we're planning to be, okay. Alright, we're gonna move on to our, our Boys Swim Team. So, if we had Jared here to, yep, come on up, where's Jared?
Hi there, the room looks bigger when you're up here. It's a pleasure and honor to coach these boys. We've had a great season, a lot to celebrate. This is my second year as the head coach of U Inta High School Swim Team, and I feel like I'm learning even more than what the boys have learned throughout the season, and our girls. One of the, one of my favorite parts of coaching is getting to see the changes that, that these young people make in their lives, the sacrifices that they make to achieve their goals. It's, it's really what I, what I love about coaching, and it's such a pleasure to, to, to get to see it. So, one of the, one of the challenges for me this season was, as a first-year head coach, we had an extremely talented Boys Team that, that came home with a region championship. And, so, the precedent was rather high for this, you know, for this season. We graduated nine senior boys at the end of last year. That was kinda rough. So, we, we had our work cut out for us. But I, I wanna, I wanna kinda go over some of the team achievements first before we recognize these boys, but I'd like them to be up here while we do that. So, boys, will you come on up, please? Now, we do have more than just three boys, in case you were wondering. These guys are a good representation of our team. We, we expected to have a growing year this, this, this season, after graduating so many seniors last year. We, we had just, just a handful of, of participants compared to last year. Our, our boys, we had three, four, four-year swimmers for the boys, and on the girls' side, we had no fourth-year swimmers. So, a very young team this season. In spite of, you know, even though, even though we had those, those challenges stacked against us, we started strong. I think one of the best accomplishments early in the season was our team came together and elected some exceptional team captains. We, Joe Caldwell and Tracy Valdez really set a precedent for the rest of the team, and, and created a culture, a supportive culture, that, that just made our athletes thrive this season. So even though they're not here, I'd like for them to be recognized for the exceptional job that they did. Yeah, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. So, after electing those team captains, we started our competition season. We, we had both boys and girls qualify at the end of the season for state in all three of their relays. The exceptional thing about that is that, for the last four years in a row, we haven't had any girls qualify for state. We didn't bring any girls to state the last four years. So them qualifying in all three relays meant that we were able to bring eight girls to state this season. If I had to choose one team accomplishment, I would highlight that over any of the others, to have those girls there with us at state this season. The, the boys also did exceptionally well. They qualified for state in all three of their relays, their relay teams. Another thing about the girls is, not only did they qualify for state in their relay, in their relays, they also had three individuals, or, I'm sorry, four individuals qualify individually at state, and three out of those four girls were freshmen. So we have a promising future ahead of us. For the boys, we brought nine boys to state. Eight of those boys swam at state. And out of those, five of them qualified in individual events, which is, which is actually really, really, really hard to do, because for swimming at state, you qualify individually, and there's, there's, there's over a thousand swimmers that, in each event, that you're competing against. So, just to qualify for state is quite exceptional. We had, we had some success at state and also at, at, at region. It's hard for me to describe to you how, how hard these athletes work. If you, if you try to swim for two hours straight, that might give you an idea of what it's like, but then, multiply that by the, the amount of, of speed that, that they swim at, and you're, you're in for a surprise. so the, the three boys that we have here, the reason why they're being recognized is, they, they actually did some things that we were not expecting this season. So after, after last season, the success that we had, So after last season, the success that we had, we actually set the school record in two out of the three relay events, and had a huge amount of success there. And this season, these boys banded together, and they broke the only record, that they, relay record that they didn't break, that the team didn't break last season. So, that's pretty awesome. So, the record that they broke was the 200 freestyle relay. It's a new school record of one minute thirty-two point three-four seconds, beating the record set in 2018 by Troy Young, Jason Valdez, Eric Brown, and Carson Talbot. There's three special things that I'd like to say about this team right here, actually four. So, one, we have to excuse Jerem Thomas, who's not here today. He's actually traveling with the soccer team, otherwise he'd be here. So, I already said one, is that's the only record that they didn't, of the relays, that they didn't break last season. Second, one boy from each class. So Jerem's our freshman. Kiefer Caldwell is our sophomore. Jaden Bearclough is our junior, and Paul Buszkowski is our senior. These guys represent the team well because they're one from each class. And then the third thing is that they were region champions in this event, which is pretty special. So, I just want to say a little, a few things about each one of these individuals real quick. So Jerem, as a freshman, emerged early in the season as one of our fastest swimmers. Throughout the season, he had nine first-place finishes. He excelled in the distance freestyle events and breaststroke. At region finals, he finished fifth in the 200 freestyle and fourth in the 100 breast. Kiefer here. Like I said, he's our sophomore. He improved tremendously, both between last season and this season, and also as, throughout the season. He had nine first-place finishes. He ended up being our fastest backstroker, and just really good all around in every event. At region finals, he finished fourth place in the 100 free, and he was our region champion in the Okay, so, Jaden Bearclough, here on the end. He's our junior. He had continued success from last year, being on two of the three relay, or, two of the two relay teams that broke records last season. This record that he broke this year eluded him last year, and so now he is on the record board three times for relays, which is pretty awesome. So, Jaden, he basically excels at everything but freestyle, but the interesting thing about that is, the school record that he just got was a freestyle event. So basically, you can consider him having a school record in his least best event. So, Jaden had a whopping fourteen first-place finishes throughout the season, which is incredible. At region finals, he was third place in the 200 IM, and I have to tell you, he was in first place all the way to the freestyle leg. It was a rough race for him, but he finished strong and got that third place. Good job, Jaden. He was also our region champion in the 100 butterfly. Okay, last but certainly not least is Paul Buszkowski, our senior and the anchor of this relay team. Gosh, I could stay up here all night and talk about Paul. Paul is a senior, provided great leadership for our team. He's kind of the one that inspired the rest of these boys, and encouraged them throughout the season. He was our freestyle sprinter. And so the thing about freestyle sprinting, if you know anything about swimming, that's the most competitive event. The freestyle sprints, everybody wants to do them. And so, you've got to really separate yourself from the pack to do well in freestyle. So, throughout the season, Paul had seven first-place finishes. There would have been more if his coach would have put him in freestyle more, but his coach likes to have him try other events, too. And he did well in those events, too. A lot of second places for this guy throughout the season. At region finals, he was fourth place in the 50 free and second place in the 100 free. With all the other success that Paul's had, probably one of the best and biggest accomplishments is that he received academic all-region and academic all-state, and is graduating with a cumulative 4.0 GPA. Thank you for your time. Good job, you into high schools one.
Okay, if we could have Coach Ottley, come on up.
Yeah, we're basketball players, just got to go up. All right, it is my honor to introduce you to Kennedy Mon. Kennedy, come on up. I gotta brag on Kennedy a little bit. She's a new move-in to our school this year, and when she moved in, I'm not going to lie, I was worried. Having a girl move into high school as a junior and trying to come onto a new team, I was worried about her. I was worried on how she'd fit in and how the girls would like her, and I worried in vain. She fit in great. She was a great asset to our team this year. The girls, I love her. She's the best supporter. When she was on the bench, she was the loudest one behind me, yelling and screaming and cheering on her team. So we're just really excited to have her on our team this year. Having said that, we get to celebrate her this year. It's super hard to beat a season record. It takes a lot of hard work, effort, dedication, and grit. It takes a lot of those things to beat a season record. This year, Kennedy beat three. So that's an amazing work for her. It's awesome. So the record she broke, single-season points, she got 391 for a single-season points, which beat the record of, remember, 361. So she beat it by 30 points in a single season. So that's amazing. The next one she beat was rebounds in a single season. She got 283. The last record was, do you remember? 203. So she beat that by 80 rebounds. So, amazing. I think this was her most fun record. I don't know. It could be. I don't know. Blocks. She got 55 blocks this season. The last record was 10. So, awesome. Awesome, awesome job. Congratulations. She's just a great asset on our team, and we're excited to see what she can do next year. Maybe break some of her own records. I don't know. We'll see. She's a great player. She works hard, and I'm just super excited to see what she can do in the future and see where she's going to go. And we're, I just couldn't be more proud of her and all the work that she's doing for our team. Go Utes!
Am I supposed to go in there too?
Okay, Coach Johnson, come on up. We have some good news from our boys basketball program as well.
Hello, everybody. I'm Coach Johnson. Dawson, come up. So, just like Coach Ottley, it's really hard to break records. And let's start with, first, let's start, today, the region awards come out, and I know Jeff. Jeff is great. If you guys don't know Jeff Lysick, I just have to text him, and he'll put whatever on, what we do. I like to thank Jeff, but he put it on today. We had three awards for region, champion, or region, all-region. Dawson got first team, and then J.J. Jensen and Gideon Owen got second team. So that's really good, and Allstate should be out next week. Now, on to Dawson. He was also a 4.0. He was an academic all-state. We had three on the team this year with, pretty awesome. That's the most I've ever had. So, that's a good thing, too. He's a good student. First thing, in basketball, the, kind of the, for points, if you score a thousand points in a career, you're pretty, you're pretty good. There's only been two that I know of in our records. Records go back 25 years. There's only been two. Josh Spears broke it three years ago, and then Dawson broke it this year at Bear River. The coach at Bear River was really, was really nice. He took a picture with him, gave him the game ball, so it was a big accomplishment there. And then, so he set, he set the career scoring points this year. He beat Josh Spears's three years ago. Josh had 1197, and Dawson beat it by 200, That's pretty awesome. And to do that, as a freshman, you have to average 10 if you play all four years. If you don't get to play as a freshman, you have to average 15 as a sophomore, 21 as a junior, and 40 points as a senior. So Dawson's been starting since he was a sophomore and he come off the bench as a freshman. So, he's been able to play and be a steady hand for me for four years. So it's been pretty awesome. He also set the scoring record for the season with 441. He beat Josh Spears's two years ago of 434. So he beat Josh by eight points this year. So that's pretty awesome, too. Just, Dawson's a good kid. His leadership, he was our leader on and off the floor. I had eight seniors this year. All of them were great kids. It's really hard as a coach to see these groups go. So, I don't know why, but it's just hard, man. I think as coaching, it's about relationships, and when you have these, it's good. So, I'm working on a plaque. We're going to stick it in the hall where we can recognize you and Josh and anyone else that's coming after. He set a good precedence for all the kids that are coming after to kind of see. So, he's going to go on a mission soon, June, right? You're gone, and he has a couple places to go. We think you're still deciding where you're going to go to play. So he has a couple offers, a couple colleges. He's just deciding where to go. So, good job, Dawson.
You know, Dawson's pretty talented, but that wasn't the reason why he had those accomplishments. Dawson, as I was in the gym with my daughter years ago, right, like three, four years ago, we saw Dawson in there all the time. Dawson spent a ton of time shooting the basketball, practicing on his own, and that's why Dawson is successful. He's also pretty talented. So, good job, Dawson. Okay, we're going to move into our Students of the Month segment. So we're going to celebrate all of our students that have been selected in each of the schools. Principals, if, I'm going to talk a little bit, but if you can go ahead and line up out this door over here. And we'll kind of use the same method we did last month, principals, so we can keep things moving along. I do want to, while we have all of our parents here, just thank you for the support that you provide for your kids. Certainly, they wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you, parents, and the help that you provide them academically, but also just, you know, the role models that you are for them and the expectations you have at home. It's evident when they come to school and they're good citizens, they work hard, they're kind to other kids. That's just a reflection of what happens in the home. So we recognize that and certainly appreciate your role, parents. These kids have worked awfully hard, right? They're here sometimes for their academic accomplishments and other times because of their citizenship, or just generally, they're, you know, because they are good students. And we'll go ahead and start with the preschool, and we'll just roll right on through, okay? Parents, as soon as they're recognized, they'll go on into the four-year, four-year here on the second level, and there's a photo op for them. So please go on out there with them, and we welcome you to come back in, okay?
Hi, I'm Erin Brown. I'm the principal at Central Cove Preschool, and I'm here to brag about Riley Somerville, our Student of the Month. Riley is a delightful girl. She is happy, she's pleasant, she's good friends with all of the kids in her class, which is especially remarkable because due to different scheduling things that have come up this year, she's been in three different classes, and she's still good friends with all of her classmates. She's a hard worker. She's always excited to learn and do whatever is asked of her, and she just, she is a joy to have in class. So we really wanted to celebrate Riley and let her know how happy we are that she's part of Central Cove.
I'm Tana Baumgartner, the principal at Ashley Elementary, and I am so excited to be here with Weston, our Student of the Month. He's one of our absolute favorite students, and he is very excited. I could hear him out in the hall. He's very excited to be here tonight. So we're so happy that Weston has decided to be here. This is his teacher, Brittany Downing, and she's going to share a few words about why we nominated him.
So, we nominated Weston because he is like the light in our classroom. He has always got a smile on his face. He loves it when the kids come and tell him, "Good morning, Weston!" Huh, sorry, that was a little loud. We even have kids outside of our classroom that will come to my room every day and ask, "Is Weston here today? Can I see Weston?" Because he literally just makes everybody's day better. So, we love having Weston, and
I'm Denise Williams. I'm the principal at Mazer, and our Cub of the Month is Stetson Schutman. What? Oh, he's our Student of the Month. What did I say, Cub? Oh, we do Cub of the Month at the school, and then this is Student of the Month. So I stand corrected. He's the whole school Student of the Month, not the class Cub of the Month. So, thought I said something really bad. But he, I nominated him. He's on our student council, and he keeps me on my toes. Our first meeting, he is just a little professional. He brought, it was our spirit wear day, so he had this shirt on, but he brought a nice button-up shirt for our meeting. So he does a great job leading our school on our student council. And his teacher, Ms. Adams, is going to share, too.
Hello, I'm Ms. Adams. I am the lucky teacher of Stetson. He has been incredible. This is my first year teaching, so having someone like Stetson in your class is, it's incredible. He's done great academically. He's consistently above grade level. He's kind. He takes care of his peers. He takes care of me. I couldn't ask for a better student. He's been so fun to watch grow, and I've got to grow alongside him. It's been incredible. I'm Mrs. Christensen, Tammy Christensen, the principal at Discovery Elementary, and I want to introduce our Student of the Month, Kayden, Kayden Fisher, and he is in second grade, and his teacher is going to tell why we chose him.
All right, my name's Crystal Bitten, and I'm so happy to be here to celebrate our great student, Kayden. He's a second-grade student at Discovery Elementary. He's an excellent kid. He demonstrates Fox pride by being kind to his classmates. We can depend on Kayden to make good choices even when others are not watching. He likes to help others and wants to help his friends be happy. He works hard in class and has a great attitude. He has made so much growth in reading and math this year. He's willing to work hard even when things are easy. He solves problems by persevering until he learns the new concept. He's a wonderful example to his classmates, and we love having Kayden at our school.
of the Month. Her name is Evangeline Nephi Puegup, and Evangeline brings joy to our classroom. She's always happy, she works very, very hard every day. She is a peacemaker, which is wonderful in a classroom of four girls and eight boys. Yes, we're very busy with boys, and she is always willing to do her best. She works extremely hard, her grades are improving every day. Today, we were working on our knowledge wordwork, and in our wordwork, we always have a word that we, we use in a sentence, and the students have an opportunity to raise their hand and use the word. And our word today was succeed. And Evangeline raised her hand, and we called on her, and her, her sentence today was, "I like to succeed by helping Ms. Bill Meyer every day." And I loved that because it is so true. She excels at being a helper and making our class enjoyable, and I am so happy to have her. Thank you, Evangeline.
My name is Chris Laborman. I am principal at Davis Elementary. I have with me here today Josie Boran, who is in Mrs. Miss Klein's classroom. Miss Klein says that Josie is an exemplary student, she is on task and manages her time and attention very well. She self-advocates and always makes sure that she understands whenever she has any confusions. She is extremely responsible and never disrupts anyone's learning. She is kind and respectful to her classmates and everyone she deals with in the school, and she always does her very best because Davis Dragons are the...
Best.
Best.
I'm Emily Arnold, the principal at La Pointe Elementary. And we have Dres Reed, he's our Student of the Month, and Mrs. Allred, our secretary, nominated him, so we'll let her talk about why she chose Dres.
So I get to pick out of all the students at La Pointe Elementary, which is super hard. This year, I decided to look at attendance. Dres is the only student that has 100% attendance this year, so that's huge. But not only that, I went back and checked all of the records from the time that he started as a kindergartner, 97% attendance. It's amazing. Not only that, I went and interviewed all of his teachers. They all say the same thing. Dres is a hard worker, easy to get along with, good to his friends, and I have never seen him in mine or Miss Arnold's office for behavior issues. So I also want to do a shout-out to Nancy Puegup, his grandmother. I know part of his attendance is because of her, so way to go, Nancy. And thank you, Dres, for all you do at La Pointe Elementary.
Okay, at La Pointe, we howl to solidify pack bonds, so on the count of three, we're all gonna howl together. Ready? One, two, three.
Hi, I'm Deanna Martino, the principal at Naples Elementary, and our Student of the Month unfortunately could not make it tonight, but we will recognize her in the morning as well at school. But I wanted to read to you about what her teacher had to say about her. Her name is Samara Barney, and her teacher is Ms. Teresa Rose, and this is what Ms. Teresa had to say about Samara, Sammy. She goes by Sammy. Sammy is a wonderful student. She is a great friend to everyone. She is constantly considering others and helping her peers. She is thoughtful and considerate and has excelled at reading this year. She has great comprehension and has recently graduated to reading chapter books. Sammy always tries her very hardest, even when she's afraid. We all enjoy her bright smile and her willing attitude. She makes our class a better place, and I love what Ms. Teresa had to say about Sammy. She'll be excited to hear that, so congratulations to Sammy if she's watching, but she's not here tonight, so thank you.
Hello. I'm Christina Vayer-Jollif. I am the principal at Uinta Middle School, and tonight I have Kenneth Head here. He has been chosen to represent Uinta Middle School. He was selected by the seventh-grade team, so all of seventh-grade teachers. And normally, I speak about what quality students possess that really exhibit being a hawk, but tonight I want to read Kenneth's words. He doesn't know that I remembered this, but earlier this year, we had students during one of our advisory lessons write down to them what it means to be a hawk, what it means to have hard work, accountability, with itness, kindness, and safety. And he wrote, "I'm a hawk, no need to gawk. We work hard by day, we work hard till May. We do our best on every test. Do not distress, UMS has finesse. We are there on time." This is a really great rhyme. "We need to walk and not be too loud when we talk."
My name is Erin Olson. I'm the principal at Vernal Middle School, and our Student of the Month is Lucy... There we go. I know Lucy to be someone who never shies away from a challenge. She always has a good attitude about taking on a project or, or an assignment. And also, I've noticed she has a, a huge impact on our, on a positive school culture and atmosphere, and I, I certainly appreciate her for that. Her teachers recognize her for, for a positive attitude, being kind and helpful to staff and students, and that she's always smiling. They appreciate that. She completes her assignments on time and is attentive in class. She's always friendly to everyone, and she makes those around her smile, too, and she's a joy to know and to be around, so congratulations, Lucy.
I'm Kelly Anderson. I'm representing AVEC. And our Student of the Month this month is Austin Nyberg. He is so awesome. I'm so glad I got to talk about him. He is a junior this year, and he actually has worked so hard that he has completed all of his classes and earned all of his credits, and he will be graduating this year. He's completely finished, and I'm so proud of him and excited for his future. Glad I got to be his teacher this year. That's it, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Brown. I'm the principal at Uinta High School, and today we have Trayson McCackney and his teacher, Matt Kotrell, who nominated him, so I'm gonna let Matt talk about Trayson and brag about him.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, this is Trey. Trey, he's incredible. He's taking three AP classes, so I'm his AP Biology teacher. Just incredible. I think the high school offers five AP classes, or six, I guess. He's in three of those this year, about all you could put in his schedule, so that's impressive. He did all, well, he was on the basketball team, so I never heard an excuse from Trey, like his responsibility, his grit is out of the world. So I'm just really happy I get to teach cool, good students like this.
What a wonderful group of kids and, and teachers, principals, thank you. We'll go ahead, President, I'll turn the time back over to you.
Well, here's another great portion of the evening that I enjoy. It's time for our school report. Denise Williams, our major school principal, is going to share with us now.
It's not working still.
Shauna.
So unplugged. We practiced earlier today, and it worked.
You gotta do it all off memory, principal, if, if system's down.
Right. Okay, that was it, thank you. Okay, so thanks for giving us the opportunity as principals to come and share with you occasionally. Have you guys ever wondered what your impact as a board is on student learning? Typically, in, well, in our organization, you guys have a direct impact on the superintendent. The superintendent has a direct impact on the directors. The directors have a direct impact on the principals. The principals have a direct impact on the teachers, and the teachers have a direct impact on the students. And we all know that this is where the magic happens, but I think it's really important for us to each understand as support staff that we do impact student learning. So I want to share a few things, I think, with you today. I think that collective efficacy is really important for us as, as an educational institute. So I'm gonna share two things with you today, two ways that you guys have helped student learning at Mazer and the impact that you've had. So the first is our ELA curriculum and the Tree Evaluation Tool. So four years ago, you guys as a board approved the ELA curriculum, which is CKLA, and I know you invested a lot of time in that. And some of the benefits that we've had by having this curriculum is that now all teachers have the tools that they need to be experts. So even our first-year teachers, which we have a lot of, they have the ability with our guaranteed and viable curriculum to be amazing teachers because they have that curriculum. It saves us time. We're no longer creating lesson plans from scratch. It makes our collaboration more efficient. It provides vertical, excuse me, vertical alignment through the grades, and it's increased the rigor of our instruction. So along with that, you approved a pilot three years ago for three schools to start using the Tree Observation Tool as part of the evaluation system, and this has been so valuable with what we're doing because now I have a tool that creates a way for me to provide high-quality feedback to teachers about their instruction rather than just going in and trying to figure out what I'm gonna give feedback on that day. So let's take a look at the results that we've had because of these things. So in the 2021-2022 school year, this is our RISE assessment data, and in the first box is the state data, the second box is the district data, and the last box is our school data. And you can see the dark blue bar is language arts, light blue, math, and the medium blue is science. So we're gonna look at our language arts because that's the curriculum that we're talking about. So in the 22 school year, we scored, we had 42.6% of our students score at or above grade level on the ELA assessment. And in the following year, we started the Tree Pilot in addition to having the curriculum for now two years, and that increased to 50.3. And in the third year, we went from 50.3 to 57.5. So we had some pretty significant gains, and a lot of that has to do with what you guys did as a board. I know it was a hard thing to, to invest the time into adopting that curriculum. I know a lot of you came and talked to principals, teachers, parents, there was a lot of time that went into that, and thank you for doing the hard things. So the second way that I chose to share with you is our School Trustlands Plan. So you guys as a board trusted my staff, teachers, and our community council, and you approved our plan, and I know you don't understand all the little parts of it, so I want to share one part with you today. One of our action steps is we pay our student intervention team, which is now called the Data Analysis Team, and our Behavior Student Intervention Team, a STIPend, and those two teams have responsible, responsibilities through the year. And I want to introduce you to my Data Analysis Team. This team, we have these four teachers, and I serve on it also. We have Kayleen McCackney. She is one of the most highly skilled teachers you'll ever meet. She has a deep understanding of how to teach, how to intervene when teaching reading, and she also believes that every student can learn, and she's made miracles happen. It's been incredible to work with her, and we need her on this team because she has that deep foundational knowledge of how to teach struggling readers to read. We have Cairo Nurdin. He is a new teacher. He teaches fifth grade at Mazer, and he, in just a few short years, he has proven himself to be highly effective. He is just phenomenal. He has really strong relationships with students, and we need him on the team because we need to develop our new teachers into highly skilled readers and also to develop the leadership in our school. Then Alisa Atherton, she came to us from Las Vegas, and she brings a wealth of knowledge with her, and she teaches first grade at Mazer, and we need her on this team because she brings a fresh perspective. And I know you don't understand all the little parts of it, so I want to share one part with you today. One of our action steps is we pay our Student Intervention Team, which is now called the Data Analysis Team, and our Behavior Student Intervention Team, a STIPend. And those two teams have responsibilities through the year. And I want to introduce you to my Data Analysis Team. This team, we have these four teachers, and I serve on also. We have Kayleen McCackney, she is one of the most highly skilled teachers you'll ever meet. She has a deep understanding of how to teach, how to intervene when teaching reading. And she also believes that every student can learn, and she's made miracles happen. It's been incredible to work with her. And we need her on this team because she has that deep foundational knowledge of how to teach struggling readers to read. We have Cairo Nurdin, he is a new teacher, he teaches 5th grade at Mazer. And he, in just a few short years, he has proven himself to be highly effective, he is just phenomenal. He has really strong relationships with students. And we need him on the team because we need to develop our new teachers into highly skilled readers, and also to develop the leadership in our school. Then Alyssa Atherton, she came to us from Las Vegas, and she brings a wealth of knowledge with her. And she teaches 1st grade at Mazer, and we need her on this team because she brings a fresh perspective. So sometimes as we're going through things, it's the same and we just keep doing it because we've done it. And so it's nice to have a different perspective. Sammy Peasman is a kindergarten teacher at Mazer, and she is absolutely phenomenal. She has embraced our district adopted curriculum, and she has shown us that teaching with fidelity leads to high student learning. I think, well, she's the first teacher that I'm aware of to have every student reading at or above grade level on an Akadance Reading Benchmark, which is just amazing, it's so exciting. And we need her on this team because she's taught kindergarten through 4th grade, and she understands all those levels of teaching students to read. So this team has led the development of our systematic approach to interventions at Mazer. We did some summer work. And we meet throughout the year, we've met on our PD days with each grade-level team. So the whole team comes in and we look at students who are not growing, how we expect them to grow according to our progress monitoring assessments. And we also look at the intervention data to see if we're intervening with those students with fidelity. After meeting with all six teams multiple times a year, they have a good perspective on our school-wide program. And so, we've been able to identify strengths and weaknesses to refine and further develop our intervention system. So we're gonna take a look at some of the data that this team has had an impact on. This shows our Akadance Reading from kindergarten to 3rd grade. And it has our above benchmark, our percentage of students that are above benchmark, at benchmark, below benchmark, and well below benchmark. And this is the beginning of the year data, this is the middle of the year data for this year. And at the beginning of the year, 25% of our students were in the well below benchmark category. And at the middle of the year, we decreased that by 10 points, and we only have 15% of our students that are in that category. And then, we're looking at one of our subgroups, our special ed subgroup, at the beginning of the year, we had 65% of our students that were well below benchmark. And now, we only have 43% that are well below, which decreased 22 points, which is phenomenal. So it's been amazing to work with this team and see what they've done, what we've been able to do there. This data shows the growth of students on Akadance. So as we measure from beginning to middle, Akadance gives them a score of their growth, and it's typical, well above, typical, sorry, typical, above typical, and well above, and then it has below and well below. And so, last year, from beginning to middle of the year, we had 65.8% of our students that had typical or above with their growth. And this year, we have increased that to 80.9% of our students that are learning at typical or above, which means that we're closing that learning gap, we're getting students where they need to be. So I just want to thank you guys for all that you do, I really appreciate the things that you do. I know that you guys have a hard job, you make a lot of decisions, and we really appreciate you, so thank you.
Board members, do you have any questions for Principal or comments?
No questions, but thank you, great presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought you were done.
Sorry.
You're fine.
I just want to thank you, because when you were saying that we did hard things, I was thinking that you do the really hard things. And you implemented all of this with fidelity, but you really, like, you are so driven, and you can see the results in all of your efforts, so I really appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
And continue to do.
Thanks.
Principal, great leadership, we appreciate it, thank you very much. As one of our highest achieving schools, I just want to know what the average number of years your teachers have that are working for you?
I have 14 teachers that are in their first three years that are provisional teachers, out of 20, wait, out of 22, including her special ed. So, 14 of them are new.
That's amazing, thank you.
They've done a phenomenal job.
Hold on now. I'm not gonna let you sit down that easy Denise. Just a couple of things that I've observed, we do have some amazing things happening at Mazer Elementary right now. Denise has worked really hard to build a great staff, and I think, you know, that commitment is evident. But some of the results, like moving kids, particularly kids who are in special education, I mean, we've moved half those kids, it's really difficult to do that. And to move her general population's students, what, 20-plus points in growth from last year to this year, those are, those are not typical results, like, you just don't see it very often. And so, this is like winning a state title, it's just amazing what's happening at Mazer Elementary. I just want to acknowledge the hard work Denise, that you've done, and your staff, your teachers. I've been in the classrooms, and the level of instruction that's happening is just fantastic, so thank you for your leadership.
You're welcome.
Okay, it's time for our patron input, part of the meeting. I don't have the name.
It's Bethany Deardan, Bethany Deardan, it's not on this sheet.
Okay, Bethany Deardan, we've given you three minutes. Tanya, will you be the timekeeper, please? We're not gonna throw rocks at you, Bethany, so if, Tanya, hold your hands up while you're getting close, okay?
Okay. Good evening, members of the board, superintendent, and community members. I'm here to address the district's approach to supporting H1B visas. The following information, facts, and numbers have been provided by Caleb Olson, a Utah-based immigration attorney. If the district so chooses, Mr. Olson will provide his services at these exact numbers, they are not estimates, they're not ballpark figures. I have over 600 signatures from the community members who support H1B visas, and I request that copies of both be recorded in the minutes of the meeting today. The first concern is cost. Initially, there was a misunderstanding that the H1B visa would cost upwards of $30,000. In reality, the total cost for the three-year extension is $37.60 per teacher, a fraction of the original estimate. Additionally, while it is true that the Utah School Board provides funds to hire first-time DLI teachers, the UNTAS School Board is responsible for all training and support. According to the Utah Dual Language Administrator's Handbook, this support includes onboarding and orientation that includes familiarization with school's policies, coordinate collaborations with team partners, assistance in finding housing, ensuring classroom is set up with proper materials, providing preparatory coaching to administer the AAPL test, frequent check-ins and reminders, and consistent classroom visits with observations, with feedback, and implementational support, many more than I can list, all of which use school board funds. There has been a concern that teachers on H1B visas could leave the district after securing sponsorship. While any professional has the ability to seek other opportunities, any new employer must also sponsor the teacher for the H1B transfer, and this employer must go through the same process as the initial H1B, including paying all the included fees. There is no difference in fees between an initial and a transfer, making this an extremely unlikely scenario. We know of at least two districts who are currently ready to pay these fees because they know the value of onboarding an experienced and qualified DLI teacher. Another concern is whether these teachers would be subject to the H1B lottery, creating uncertainty about whether these funds would be wasted. Fortunately, this is not an issue, because UNTAS School District has an affiliation agreement with the Utah State University through programs such as Bridge and Concurrent Enrollment. Any H1B applications we submit are exempt from the lottery. Having a Utah State University employee help with the renewal of the visas is not necessary, and the idea that this is needful is a result of a misunderstanding. The exemption status has been confirmed by Mr. Olson. We understand that the board must make difficult financial decisions regularly, balancing various priorities, but education should be at the top of the priority list. Taxpayers, community members, and parents value education. Every decision we make reflects our priorities. It's possible we may find a compromise where public-sourced funds might be used to complete this project, but we hope the UNTAS School Board will choose to prioritize education with their budgeting choices. The school district strives for excellence in their strategic plan. How does a minimal financial savings in exchange for losing highly qualified teachers fit into the strategic plan? Let's send all our teachers in the base in the message that they are a valued investment, not a dispensable warm body. Tonight, I urge you to prioritize education, student success, and the continued strength of the DLI program. Thank you.
Seth Lyman, where are you at Seth? Seth, you're, what you've asked for to be heard on here is not on the agenda, so we can't hear from you.
I'll make, yeah, that'd be great. I picked it up the online form. All you have to do is email me by Friday, 14th, we'll let you know, okay? We want to hear from you. Seth, I'll be giving you a call, okay? Thanks. Online, do we have any online?
We need to check online so that we can see if there's been anything submitted online for patron input, pardon me? Technology's wonderful till you're waiting on it, and then it seems like it's really
So, President, we have 25 comments. Board members, I'm just gonna go through real quick and see if any of these comments are, address anything that's on the agenda. If so, we can read these in public, if not, then I'll just give you a printout of these Board members, none of the comments address agenda items, so I will give you these, okay?
Okay, thank you. Okay, board members, number two, letter A, consent calendar. As you well know, you can break these apart, there's two of them, there is no number two contracts needing board approval. So, you can do them individually or all as one. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, including minutes from February 12th, 2025, work session and business meeting, the February 26th, 2025 special business meeting, and the monthly board financial update.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Todd seconds, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Policies for approval on first reading, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 005.0550, volunteering in the district schools on first reading.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Tanya, seconds, any further discussion, board members? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Policies for approval on second reading, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 007.0505, school fee policy.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Todd seconds, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Approval of K-5 re-ready math curriculum adoption, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the K through 5 ready math curriculum.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Tanya, seconds, any further discussion?
Just a question of clarity, do we need, do we need to include in the motion the one year of grade 6 through 8? I don't, because his motions are, I don't know.
So, I think Imi had to leave, but I believe that's right. I would, I would go ahead and clarify that.
Do you want to include that in your motion, Todd?
Yes, so, included in that motion, we would be able to also, at minimal cost, grades 6 through 8.
For one year.
For one year.
Tanya, do you still second that motion?
Sure.
What did you say?
Sure, yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Approval of naming and logo adoption for the new Central Cove preschool.
I move to approve the renaming of the new preschool to Central Cove Early Learning Center. The Monarch Butterfly is the new school mascot, and the recommended artwork to serve as the official logo of the new preschool.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I would second that motion.
Todd seconds, any further discussion? All in favor, oh, Robin, sorry.
Just again, to clarify, just publicly, that the logo that we were shown today is not the final version, it will go under some different iterations before we, yeah, finalize.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Personnel changes, I'd entertain a motion to approve the personnel changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel changes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Dr. Lees, would you come up and help us, please?
So, a couple things, tonight you are looking at seven candidates to hire, to fill new hire positions, however, we do need to pull one off of the list. So if you look at your list, A5, that hire has not been finalized yet, so when it's finalized, we'll bring it when it's finalized, we'll bring it to the board, so when you make the motion, you'll have to remove A five. So, that will leave six candidates to fill new hire positions, three current employees who have been recently assigned to a new position, and four candidates to fill extracurricular coaching positions. For your information, there are sixteen names presented of employees who have or will end their employment on the date indicated.
Okay, board members, so the, the way that this works, and I'll probably have to have some help to get this, we've already had a motion and a second, we have to now have a revised motion?
We have to do an amendment.
To remove letter A five.
So, I'll amend my motion to admit, or approve the personnel changes except for A five. Perfect.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Robin seconds it? Okay, board members, any further, do you, do you need some more time?
Make sure you've noted C four, that was a late add. So, if you, if you didn't look at that today, then you'll want to make sure you note that one.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, thanks, Dr. Leese. Informational items, purchases over, excuse me? Oh goodness, I just, I'm, I'm, I make more mistakes than not. Item G, approval of real estate agreement.
I move to approve the real estate purchase contract to sell fifteen point zero one acre property at six oh four south to one fifty west, and Vernal to Phase One Properties LLC in the amount of four hundred and twelve thousand dollars, including three shares of Upper Ashley Water.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Todd Massey seconds, any further discussion, board members?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Now I get to move down to three A, purchases over fifty thousand, Troy?
We have one purchase this month over fifty thousand dollars for the amount of sixty-four thousand dollars with U N A Basin Wholesale West for food for our, our school foods program, it's a, it's a pretty normal procurement amount.
Any questions about that, board members?
No.
Calendar, calendaring items, Dr. Woodford?
Yeah, board members, if you'll just open up the, the calendaring item, you'll, you'll notice there's some other files attached, one about the storytelling festival, that's, I, I think that's the one that Robin had talked to us about earlier. And, and then there's another one that's titled upcoming, and that's the U N A Arts events. Hopefully, that's been something that you've enjoyed having attached to put all the arts in, in one area, I've, I've appreciated that. But as far as the calendaring items, you'll just have to scroll down and, and see what, you know, if there's any events, there's a a couple of school community council meetings upcoming. Trying to see if there's anything else there, there, there's a lot, right? You can see the storytelling festival, if you scroll down, there's, there's quite a few events coming up, we're actually getting into another busy part of the year, as we get into spring, a lot of school activities, book fairs, things of that nature. Even parent teacher conferences on the horizon, so, anyway, do you have any questions about any of these events, we do have some principals here that, that could answer any questions that you might have. You can tell we, we really do like value reading in this district, because there's a lot of events surrounding literacy and reading, which is really nice to see.
Robin, can you get to eighty percent of these? No?
Wish I could be in two places at once.
Board members, do you have any questions about the calendar?
Just of note, and I'm sure it's well advertised, is the ACT for the juniors at U N A High on March twenty-sixth. Really appreciate how, I know that's a huge lift. It's awesome, though, to, to have that day for them to be able to take it, so, it's all your work, you guys at U N A High.
Todd, you okay?
I'm good, yes, thank you.
Tanya? Okay. Board members, anything further for this meeting, Troy, let's start with you tonight.
No, I just wanted to thank everyone for the, the work that's been put forward on, on some of the items that got approved, the, the real estate transaction, the, the policy changes, many of the things that we've worked on, so, just thank, thank the board for their input and for their participation in the committees.
Thank you.
Todd?
At the end of me, I thought you was coming the other way. Give me some time, sorry, I was still thumbing through some other stuff. So, I, I don't really think I have anything, it, it's great to see that we have this kind of support for, for our Spanish speaking teachers, our D L I teachers, I think, it's, it's awesome that you appreciate and, and love those individuals, it's also great to see a showing of support, I think that's the key. Tonight, you know, I, I look at the coaches that were here, there's been some exceptional athletes, some of you are aware of the fact that we, we try to, our goal as a board has been to try and keep some of these exceptional coaches as well as, as teachers, and in doing so, sometimes that's, that's challenging and difficult, but you take, I was glad to hear that Coach Katty's goal was actually ten state championships. I know I had the opportunity to wrestle for Coach Priest, who had those same records, and, and it's just amazing that the community supports that type of event as well, and it takes a, I guess, a grassroots effort to build those programs, we, we now encourage our, all of our sports and individuals to, to be our coaches, to be more engaged in building programs for our youth that, that help them advance and, and become better, and, and in doing so, we've done the same for our, our curriculum, and, and trying to get that which supports us as a school, I think many of you have probably heard the, the comment, or the fact that U N A is on the rise, I, I like to to say that the decisions and the, and the faculty that we have today has, has helped us get to that direction. As we had, I believe, a total of five schools that were above state average last year in, in a couple of categories, we hope to have more than that this year, those are always key indicators that, that we are on the rise, and so I know it's a lot of work by a, a number of individuals out there, teachers, principals, and the processes, and I think the processes of, of being able to, to verify where we are at, as we, as we, we look at what each individual is doing, and each student is doing, as some of you were able to see from our Mazer Elementary, Principal Williams is doing a tremendous job there. And it's, and it's, I think, you tested above the state average in two of three categories and almost the third, right? All, all three, all three categories, so, it's just incredible what we do with good leadership, so thank each of you, and again, great presentation tonight. So, it's awesome to see those numbers and, and know that, that we're getting the results that we had hoped for, so, that's all, President.
Thanks, Todd, Robin?
You're, you're already on.
I just wanted to say the public process is alive and well, and appreciate all the input and, and feedback from our public, because this is public education, and appreciate that, and then just one other quick story. I was down, I just happened to be at, at U N A High early one morning when it snowed back then, and there was, I think, there was a couple custodians gone to a warmer climate, and I just was super impressed that, and, I don't, oh, it was Lauren, Laurel Bowden, Mrs. Bowden, what's her position now? Work-based learning, she just grabbed a shovel and was out there helping, so, that was, I don't know, I just, I love public education, so, thanks to all our staff members.
Thank you, Robin, Denise?
So, it's always hard to say, I always think afterwards, I'm like, oh, I should have said this, and I should have said that. We live in a great community, we have great people who live here who care. It's not just one person, it's everybody that pitches in. So, I'm thankful for where we live, I'm thankful for the people that come and respect the process, and sometimes we don't agree, and, and that's hard, but it's okay, you know, but we treat everybody hopefully with respect, whether we agree or not, and I'm thankful for everybody that showed up tonight. I'm thankful for our teachers, one, they're amazing, and our students. But yeah, just, I think this is a great board meeting, so, that's about it.
Thank you, Denise, Tanya?
I, I, I am just impressed with, with how many people showed up because they care about their community, and they care about their neighbors, and that's, that's always a great thing. And I have just, the celebrations tonight were really fun for me, I just, I love what's happening at, at Mazer Elementary, I'm just so impressed with to have the majority of your teachers be in their first three years, there had to be some serious training going on there to perform like they have, and to have the kind of results that they have, and so, but all of our, all of our principals work really hard, and I'm really grateful for what they do for all of our kids, and that's something we're celebrating, and I had the opportunity to go to the High School Musical, and I loved every minute of it, it was just such a fun and happy and good show, and there were so many kids showcased, I absolutely loved that there was just a variety of kids, and it was just, with so much talent, and so many people in the community that came together to make that happen, and made a lot of sacrifices, so we appreciate that.
I guess I'll give the superintendent the last word tonight, so, I, you know, I appreciate everybody that's here tonight, and every, the, the different opinions, and you know, we I appreciate the people that I work with on the board and in the school district, that we try, we try to do our best, I wanted to share one thing that's been helpful for me this afternoon with you, and I don't know why I want to share this, but I got up this morning, and I got really early because of some stuff that's going on at, at work. When you're calving cows, you don't, you don't get to take much time off, so, I got up this morning, and I was working my way, way around about four o'clock this morning, why, I was kind of feeling sorry for myself, and I'm sure that we all have days like that, when you get up in the morning, and it just, oh, woe is, woe is me, so, something that might help you when the next time you're having a tough day. A dear friend, a dear friend of mine, over his life has, had a, a great little family, and he lost a daughter a lot of years ago, and what a terrible thing that was. A few years later, he lost a son, and what a terrible thing that was, a couple of years ago, his wife passed away. So, that left him and his two boys, one which passed away this morning. And I thought to myself, when they called and told me, him and his one son is all that's left of his whole family. When I got the word of that, I thought how selfish I was for the woe of me feelings that I was having this morning. And it made me think of it as the sirens was going on outside, and we have a couple of our dedicated police officers here with us tonight, I hope whoever's family that is that them sirens are headed for, I hope that things are well for them. Superintendent?
Thanks, President, that, you know, it's good to, to hear those things, and it builds perspective in life. I want to thank Bethany for, for coming and, and addressing the board, this is a public school district, the district is not mine, and it doesn't belong to the directors or the principals, even though we like to have ownership and stewardship of it, but it's the publics, and these people up here represent you, and not just you sitting in this room, but the whole public in our community. And these are tough issues that we have, that we've been discussing here as of late, lots of emails, lots of phone calls, and, and we appreciate that public process. And, and this board, they, they hear you, they, they do, they care about what you think, and they also hear their other constituents out and about in the community. So, they, they have hard decisions to make, but they do care dearly about our kids, and about the, the viability of our school district moving forward. I appreciate you being here to share and express your, you know, your, your concerns and your desires to, to be supportive of our teachers, we do love our teachers, and we care about them dearly. I want to also just, just thank, you know, Denise, that was a wonderful presentation, and our principals, as of late, I think I can go back almost a full year now, all of our presentations have been data based, you've brought excellent data and shown student growth. We do have some wonderful things happening, U N A is on the rise, our kids are, are learning more today than they ever have. We have data to back that, but that's because of the hard work that happens in, in our classrooms, we have phenomenal teachers, and we're so fortunate for the hard work that they put in for our children. I, I appreciated the book study, Robin, thank you for leading us on that. You know, it, it just keeps us from becoming complacent when we continue to learn and grow. There's a lot of community members that came in here after our work session, I know the business meeting, we kind of went like this, right? But there were, there was a lot of dialogue and thoughtful conversation that happened from four o'clock until, till six o'clock to get us to the point where they could make all of those approvals. I've talked way too much, but thank, thanks to everybody that makes this work in our school district.
Can I ask what you want to say, tell me?
I cannot comment on that, because it's not on the agenda.
Is there a reason, can you tell us why it's not on the agenda? Because we have high board.
The school board decided not to put it on the agenda, that's part of the public process, okay, thank you.
But our process is here in parents, and as parents, I feel like if we went about the process correctly and did it on time, and February eighteen, we got entered it in on time, and it was still denied, it's kind of frustrating, I'm sure, I, listen, I get your guys' jobs hard, and I'm not here to disrespect any of you or disrespect any of your time, but it feels frustrating as parents when something is clearly very important to all of us, and it gets denied from the agenda when we've gone about the process correctly. And so, it's just confusing why it wouldn't have been put on the agenda, because had it been put on the agenda, you would have been able to read twenty-five comments of concerned parents wanting to talk about this issue, and again, I get, your job is hard, we're not here to tell you that you have to vote a certain way, but not feeling hurt as a parent.
Okay, we got, we got to end it right there, everybody in the meeting, I'm the one that denied it being on the agenda. We had, and so, you know, you, we can lay that blame wherever it wants to be, but I can't let the Pope, the comments go on any longer, or I've got to let everybody that's here, and it's not an agenda item, it's not an agenda item because I didn't want the board voting on it tonight, we'd all, we'd, we'd visited around, and we knew where we stood and where our constituents stood, so, with that being said, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
You guys all knew where you stood before we even got here, is what you've just said. You guys all knew where you stood before we even got here, is what you've just said.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to close this session.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.